Now, 9:30. A quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of November 15, 2016 is called to order. Approval of agenda and order of priority. Is there a motion?
So move.
Support. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Introduction of State Board members and guests. At this time Marilyn will introduce the members of the State Board of Education. Marilyn.
Yes. To my immediate left is Brian Wiston. He's the State Superintendent. He also serves as Chair of the State Board of Education. And as we go around the table, the President of the Board is John Austin. He resides in Ann Arbor. Cassandra Albridge is the Board's Vice President. She resides in Rochester Hills. Michelle Fecto is here.
Is here.
She's the Board Secretary. There's Michelle. And she's from Detroit. And Richard Ziley is Board Member. He's from Dupont. This year's Teacher of the Year is Tracy Hordisky. She sits at the Board Table and provides the view of the teachers of the state of Michigan. And she's from Kennewah Hills, Zinser Elementary when she's not here, where she's a reading coach and instructional specialist. Across the table is the Governor's Representative, Craig Ruff, the Education Advisor. Eileen Weiser is on her way. She's a Board Member from Ann Arbor. Kathleen Strauss, Board Member from Detroit. Lupe Ramos-Montini, Board Member from Grand Rapids. She's the Board's NASB delegate, which is their Association, National Association of State Boards of Education. Next to me is Pamela Pugh. She will be arriving a little bit later in the meeting. She's from Saginaw. She's the Board's Treasurer. I'm Marilyn Schneider. I'm the State Board Executive.
Thank you Marilyn. Now we'll introduce our new employees. Marty, please.
Hi. Mark Howe is our new Legislative Analyst and Advisor. Mark, do you want to share a little bit about yourself?
Certainly. Thank you, first of all, Board Members, for the service that you provide, the leadership that you provide for children and education in Michigan. I have 30 years of experience working for elected officials at the federal, state, and local level. I'm a former school board member, a former journalist. Been married to my wife Kami for 26 years. We have a 23-year-old daughter and granddaughter who is almost three-years-old and the love of our life. And I'm just excited to be here and be part of the education community.
Vanessa, please.
Good morning, everyone. We have three new employees in my division. We're going to start with Brian Lloyd.
Yeah, thank you Vanessa. My name is Brian Lloyd. I work for the Office of Educator Talent as an education research consultant, working for student growth, Michigan Student Growth. I come to Michigan Department of Education from Ingham Intermediate School District, where I worked to implement multi-tiered systems of support, as well as also working as a school psychologist. What I'm doing for Michigan Department of Ed is I am educating student growth for the purposes of educator evaluation and providing and disseminating guidance for the use of student growth to inform education.
And next we have Rebecca Emmeline.
Hi. Thank you for having us today. I have been an educator for the last 17 years. I've worked in public education system in Michigan. As a teacher, I taught high school. As a building administrator, I served as both Assistant Principal and Principal. As Central Office Administrator, where I served as Assistant Superintendent for teaching and instruction and resources, and as a Superintendent. And I am really pleased to join the Office of Educator Talent and really spend some time focusing on our educator evaluation system. And we're really looking to be these really intelligent and dedicated professionals on how we can make our educator evaluation system meaningful and impactful for our students and our professionals.
And last we have Dixie Konevman.
Good morning. Thank you for having us this morning. I've been an educator in Branch County for 28 years as a teacher, principal, and Assistant Superintendent. And I am now a Consultant with Office of Educator Talent, working with administrative evaluation. I'm so excited to be doing that. As Rebecca mentioned, we're really hoping to join that team and help to make that evaluation process meaningful for children and not just kind of measurement. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, please.
I'd like to introduce Deidre McFarry. Could you please introduce yourself to the board and talk a little bit about student evaluation?
Hi, I'm Deidre McGlory. I work in Office of Special Education and Program Accountability, investigating complaints. I previously was a teacher in Detroit schools.
And Kyle.
It's my pleasure to introduce Natalie Michelson. Can you say a little bit about yourself and your role here at the department?
Well, my name is Natalie Michelson. I am an analyst with school nutrition programs. We go out to administrative reviews of school nutrition programs, see how much they're serving our students. I come here as a teacher. I was a teacher for eight years in Calumneze Public Schools and out in Maryland. So, I see the impact that these programs have on our students, and I'm looking forward to supporting it from a side. Thank you.
Great. Did we miss any new employees or did we get them all? All right, well, let's welcome the new employees. Now I ask the audience to introduce yourself. Start Marty, please.
Hi, I'm Marty Ackley. I'm the Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs.
Hi, good morning. Chelsea Martino is with the Secondary School Principals Association.
David Michelson, Michigan Education Association.
Tom Green, Michigan Education Association.
Paul Slaw, Winryza.
Judy Prichard, Mco Miasdi.
I think Leah Breen's sitting back there.
Leah Breen, Office of Professional Information Services.
All right, go ahead. Yep.
I'm Amy Schelling, and I serve on the Special Education Advisory Committee, and I'm an Associate Professor at Grand Valley.
Good morning. I'm Terry Chapman. I'm the Director for the Office of Special Education.
Back row.
I'm Hannah. I'm a special education advisor.
Chris Kleber with Don Warren News Service. Big of Cansler with Nurse News.
Ryan News Facilitator for Special Education Advisory.
Peyton Rodriguez from NWEA.
Paul Rice, NWEA.
Steve Best with MDE.
I'm Mr. Biggs with MDE.
How about MDE?
With the four in MDE.
Did we miss somebody in the back here?
I'm Shana Ross.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, if you're here to make any public comment at today's meeting, please complete a form and get it to Marilyn when you're done. Forms are available on the table outside the boardroom. Public comment is tentatively scheduled for about 1:00 today. So, personal privilege, special, the State Board of Education election results. Congratulations to Tom McMillan and Nikki Snyder, who were elected during last week's State Board meeting. I don't think either one of them are with us today. Their term, their eight-year terms begin January 1, 2017. And of course, we're going to be honoring Kathleen Strauss and John Austin as they are leaving their service. Kathleen with 24 years and John with 16 years. We'll have a reception for them at our December meeting and certainly are deeply appreciative of their service, and we'll celebrate that appropriately at our next meeting. Committee of the whole meeting discussion items. The first item on Committee of Whole Agenda is Presentation on Special Education Advisory Committee, SEAC Annual Report 2015-16. The Special Education Advisory Committee is mandated by the Individuals with Disabilities Act to advise the State Education Agency and by Michigan law to advise the State Board of Ed regarding special education issues. The SEAC Annual Report summarizes the work the committee has done throughout the year. Today's SEAC leadership is here to present the report and ask the Board for feedback. Michelle Fecto interacts with SEAC on a regular basis. Michelle, do you have any comments before we get going?
I want to thank all the people who work on SEAC and then take leadership roles. It's, I think, it's a probably diverse group of people who give up their time, no money, and no support, but do it out of a labor of love and a wealth of information that is quite broad. And I really want to again commend Terry Chapman for her service. I think she's a wonderful Director of Special Programming, so.
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate those good comments. So, presenting today is Terry Chapman, Director of Special Ed. Maggie Koch, SEAC Chairperson from Fremont, representing the Ark of Michigan. And Amy Schelling, SEAC Ex-officio Member, representing Educator Prep Institutions. Associate Professor of Special Ed at Grand Valley State University. Please.
Good morning. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you today, especially about our Special Education Advisory Committee. I also want to thank Michelle, because Michelle has made herself available on multiple occasions to attend our meetings. She introduces herself and welcomes our new members at each of their retreats in the fall. These members all have a three-year commitment as part of their role with the Special Education Advisory. And it's a, it's a big body of work that they take on. So, we appreciate Michelle kind of keeping us going in the right direction, too. So, just to kind of recap a little bit, Special Education Advisory Committees are a requirement under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. States have the opportunity to convene this committee in any, any way they feel is going to meet the needs of their state. And in Michigan, our committee meets every single month for a full day. And so, we really feel that respecting people's time, that we really take on some important issues that we think are worthy of the time and attention people have set aside time for to inform the Board regarding the intent of the group. We usually engage in some common learning around issues that we are interested in having feedback on to establish a fund of information that is common among all of us. We have parents, we have professionals, we have a mixed, very diverse group of people. And I think that learning part is very important to our ability to give meaningful input. Our mission really is to support opportunities for all kids in Michigan, especially kids with disabilities, through gathering, sharing, and disseminating, disseminating information to the public, working with the State Board of Education through the Office of Special Education. Our membership is based on the requirements in IDEA that says 51% of our committee must be an individual with a disability or the parent of a child who is currently receiving services under IDEA in our schools. If you are interested, we have, in seeing the committees and organizations that are represented, we have 33 voting members, 25 organizations, there are eight members at large, and then we have several non-voting ex-officio members. And those are all listed in the annual report. The purpose of SEAC really is to identify unmet needs across the state as it pertains to the education of children with disabilities. Children in Michigan with disabilities make up about 12% of the population of the K-12 group of children, and making sure that the processes and procedures that are in place for all children are also beneficial to kids who have been identified as needing an individual education program under IDEA. They also publicly comment on any rules or regulations that are being written or proposed for consideration. They advise the state agency, most especially our office, when we're looking at evaluations and reports as it pertains to the obligations we have for the federal government grant that we are funded by. And we also look at the corrective actions related to any of the monitoring that's being done across the state to improve the systems where children are being serviced. One of their other important tasks is to understand due process hearing outcomes and how those issues where districts have been found in non-compliance through an adjudicated process might inform us about unmet needs of other children who are receiving services across the state. The annual report is something that we send to the Board every year at the end of each of the school years. We make it publicly available on the website that I've listed on the slide, and it is really the intent of our organization to make sure that all the interested community members are aware of the work that SEAC is engaged in and that they have an opportunity to participate and inform us of issues they would like us to consider as well. The work of SEAC really in looking at unmet needs is to bring together our diverse group of stakeholders and identify areas that we think might be of interest to the Board in the context of how you might want to understand students with disabilities in the context of decisions that you're being asked to make on a regular basis. And so, each year they establish subcommittees around identified topics. And last year, there were two topics of interest to the group. One had to do with Native American children and other minority populations, and paying attention to these small groups of children who sometimes, their, their data outcomes or performances sometimes mask when you're looking at large sets of numbers representing the state population, and how we might change our interventions to support their improvement, understanding their outcomes may be significantly different than the general population. The other subcommittee that we convened was around looking at students who present challenging behaviors in our schools. We know that that is a huge obstacle and barrier sometimes to a child's ability to learn, and how do we understand the need to create effective environments that make it conducive for their learning as well as the learning of other children. And so, for the purposes of our presentation today, Maggie and Amy are going to talk with you a little more specifically about the subcommittee's work on students with challenging behaviors. Maggie is our co-chair, and I think it would be helpful if you could kind of see a little bit about how the committee framed their understanding around challenging behaviors.
Okay. Thank you for having us today. The subcommittee work that we started with last year, when we said challenging behaviors, because we're such a diverse group, everyone had a different idea. So, our major focus was defining what we meant by challenging behaviors. And what we came up with is a severe persistent pattern of behavior that may endanger the student or those around him or her and consistently disrupt the learning environment, and that challenging behaviors are pervasive and persistent, not sporadic. So, that could be our focus when we look at that. And then we explored, the subcommittee looked at the needs of the student, considered the concerns and the dedicated, you know, what the concerns of the dedicated professionals had, and reviewed practices across the state. We had Dr. Steve Goodman come in, the Director of the Michigan Behavior Learning Support Initiative, MYBLISI, and provided consultation to the subcommittee and provided us some good feedback on what is currently happening out there. Terry, did you want to say something else?
Yeah. Steve. Dr. Steve Goodman is the Director of a grant-funded initiative. The acronym we call MYBLISI is really an integrated approach to behavior and learning in schools. They are also mutually funded by the United States Department of Education's Office of Special Ed Programs. They're a well-established organization, currently in 23 of our intermediate school districts, and a component of their work is to really understand positive behavioral interventions and supports, and how to create healthy learning environments for all children, and then how we understand those practices in the context of good academic instruction and the outcomes we can expect from that. It was something we felt the committee needed to understand to be able to give meaningful input on behavior and how we might understand the need for our school environments to be looked at differently in that context.
Thank you for having us again today. And so, what we did, one of the things that we wanted to do was we wanted to look at data. We wanted to look at practices that were currently in place, and then some of the data around challenging behavior and students with disabilities in our K-12 classrooms. And this is a pie chart of what you have on the left side of the screen is the total population of students with IEPs broken down by race and ethnicity. So, you can see that on the graph on the left, that the 66% of the students with IEPs are students that, are white students. 21% of students with IEPs are students that are African-American students. What you have on the right side of the screen now is the, the number, the percentage of students with IEPs that are either suspended for greater than 10 days or are expelled. And if you look at the, look at the numbers, although African-American students make up only 21% of the student population of students with IEPs, they account for 44% of the suspensions and expulsions. Yes?
What's the gender breakdown of students with IEPs?
Yeah, I don't have.
That's a great question. We have that information, but, but I don't have that.
We'll get it.
With me?
Yeah. We can. There are typically more boys than girls.
More boys than girls, but I don't know exactly the count.
And I would like to see the percentage of suspensions between boys and girls as well.
Sure. Yep. It's good information. Yes.
And I would like to see the reasons why they were suspended.
Yep.
Thank you. I'll get those to you.
Thank you. Yep. This next data refers to MYBLISI schools and the reading meet. And so, if you look at the, at the two bar graphs, what it shows is that there were 46, so 46 schools that had fewer, well, let me start again. Okay, so, per 100 students, they, they looked at the, the number of students that were meeting or above the state average for the reading meet, and then those, in those same groups, how many suspension, or how many major discipline referrals were made from, from classrooms on that. And so, as you can see, there are about, it's about one, one student, one referral for every five students on the left side for schools that had, that were meeting or exceeding the meet average in reading, but one referral per every one student for schools that, whose students were performing below the state average. This is a snapshot of one school's example of, of the amount of time that they were engaging in discipline referrals for students previous to implementing school-wide positive behavior supports. And it really is just, it's an example of, of the lost instructional time that can be recaptured in schools when they implement school-wide positive behavior supports with, with fidelity. 56 days is a lot of, is a lot of lost instructional time. And then this, yes?
On what basis do you make that claim?
They, the calculation was based on, they used about a 15-minute increment of time per behavior, classroom behavior referral, from the teacher's interaction to a building administrator, and then they multiplied that by the number of referrals they had for a school year, and came up with the 26,880 minutes, which converted to 448 hours, which essentially is 56 days of school. So, when children are in school for 180, and 56 of those days are spent really dealing with behavior problems, it compromises the child's ability to learn as well as the instructional leaders to be able to effectively provide instruction.
Of course, but is, is it assumed that positive behavior support will work in a way that other methods don't?
This was what, MYBLISI uses PBIS as part of their approach, so they, this is a point of data that they looked at prior to their intervention and then captured after, and...
Okay, so this is a theoretical gain. It hasn't been proven in practice yet.
This actually was in this one school.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But this one's school.
Yeah, they collected data before implementation.
Okay.
And then after implementation.
I'm just looking for one more clarification.
Yep.
This is 56 days of total administrative and staff time?
Well, they're, they're looking at instruction time as being the 180 full days of school based on 448 hours. So, it wouldn't be lunchtime, it'd be whatever their instructional time.
Okay, I really want to use this calculation, so when I'm, it's graphic and horrible, but I'm still trying to drive, is this student, lost student time?
Yes.
Because to me, this is all of the students. So, is this divided out by the student number? That this is the...
This was divided by the number of office referrals.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to figure out 56 days of, you're saying...
Yeah, we can't say one student lost 56 days.
No.
And we can't say one classroom lost 56 days, but we can say overall in that school, 15 minutes in this classroom, 15 minutes in that classroom, 15 minutes in that classroom, add it up. So, it's, it's a difficult number.
Well, I would just say that if you could say that there are that many classrooms, and each teacher lost four instructional days.
Yeah, that would be meaningful.
That would be a better point.
And I guess my concern is if it takes a teacher five minutes to implement positive behavior instruction for an individual student...
It's a school-wide approach for those, yeah. PBIS is not something that you do per child. It is a cultural implementation of a different model for how you proactively set up your school environment that's really in the favor of children being successful. And so, you, you establish a common understanding about what the expectations are for all children. And the children and the staff give input on what that should be.
Okay.
So, that it's reflective of the individual cultures within individual schools. And then you have processes in place for making sure everybody understands it the same way. And when children demonstrate that they're not following what the expectations are, rather than assuming they somehow know better, and we tend to kind of react in a negative way, with PBIS, you basically give them opportunity to understand the learning. You teach them differently what it is you want them to be successful at. And so, the research around PBIS nationally is that when your learning environment for all children is clearly designed so that everybody understands what's expected, you have fewer incidents of children who don't, you have a better ability to remediate when they demonstrate a lack of ability to follow the program, and that you ultimately reduce the, the need for suspending children significantly, because most children don't set out to ruin someone's day. They're operating on what they know. And so, this is a more proactive way of looking at behavior rather than the old model of discipline, which is really much more negative and reactive in nature.
Sure.
And really assumes kids know better.
This is sounding a lot like Lee Cantor's Assertive Discipline, which must be 50 years old by now.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and I'm sure there's components of that embedded in the process.
Yeah, and it, and it, it provides a framework for when you identify a student is, is displaying challenging behavior that's interfering with their learning. There are some things that you can do. First, you want to identify whether it's a skill deficit or a performance issue. And then, in, in, so it's tiered. They're just like the, the reading or multi-tiered systems of supports, it's tiered, so they're, like Terry said, there, there's a level that all students are expected to get, and then there are a few students who will need a little bit more intensive attention to correct the, you know, to correct the behavior. And then there are some students who might even need more intensive supports and interventions. But the point is, is not to simply provide a punitive consequence for a student when their behavior is inappropriate, but to, but to make sure they understand and to teach them replacement behaviors that are appropriate.
Okay.
Some of the data on reading was really to try to say, do children misbehave and therefore they are not able to learn? Or are children who are not able to learn more likely to misbehave? And that's a really difficult question to ask. And so, positive behavioral interventions and supports really tries to put behavior in an area where we can marginalize the impact on that to better determine what the educational needs of children actually are, so we can more appropriately address those in an environment that's conducive to that.
Okay. Now, the, the school where this was done, was it from the left column or the right column on the previous?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't really know.
So, we don't, we don't know if this was a school performing below meet state average or at or above?
I don't.
Okay. That would be helpful to know, because clearly a school that's got a lot of discipline issues in, in the one column is, that's, you've got, you kind of expect that would impact the effectiveness of its educational program.
Absolutely.
Eileen?
And one last question. As you do this kind of tracking, if you could not only give us clarity on how difficult the environment was in this school, but also, it occurs to me that, having watched PBIS, that it's, it has an accrual nature. As children become more and more familiar going through the grades with it, it should really untangle whether this is behavioral or, or skills with teachers and other things that could be changed.
Sure.
If you can track it over time, if you can choose a few schools, so that we can see what effect it has over, say, a three to five-year span, that would be phenomenal, because it would make people really understand what it could do.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I will say that, that on the MYBLISI website, they have some data reports that they have put together of cohort schools, and then also their work with ISDs. And so, there, there is some detailed reporting and data available on the MYBLISI site for the schools that it's been implemented with. And now, I think that's about 512 schools across the state of Michigan.
So, just for context, IDEA, you know, we hear about Part B and Part C. IDEA actually is divided into four parts. Part A of IDEA really outlines what grant requirements look like for IDEA, because there's funding tied to it. Part B are all the requirements for children 3 to 21... Part A of IDEA really outlines what grant requirements look like for IDEA because there's funding tied to it. Part B are all the requirements for children three to twenty-one who are eligible for an IEP under that federal definition. Part C is for children who are birth to three years old, who are the early identification and entitlements for babies. And then Part D is a, a part of IDEA that gives the federal government discretionary grant funds that they can award to states, universities, private entities that might be able to enhance and provide support for education through teacher preparation or community initiatives. The US Ed has to go to Congress to substantiate the need for that continued portion of funding for those Part D grants. Part D grant funding is what is also a part of supporting MyBlisD. So our office through Part B dollars supports MyBlisD, as does the federal government's Part D. They apply and have been awarded additional funds there for about eight years. US Ed's respect of MyBlisD's work is such that they take the data from MyBlisD's efforts and they use it in presenting to Congress to establish the need to continue Part D grants to states to support kids with disabilities. So there's a high degree of fidelity with MyBlisD that's respected nationally. Dr. Steve Goodman actually supports five states. Michigan happens to benefit a lot because he lives in Michigan, but he also works with five other states. He's also part-time as a paid part of the National PBIS Center out of the University of Oregon. So the information regarding data, Steve Goodman could come and give you a full day's dissertation on all of that. So I will do what I can to work with Steve to get you some of that educational outcome based on the practices we've been talking about today.
All right, Michelle, please.
I was just going to bring up some of what you just said, because I know Steve Goodman has come to the special ed task force, the governor's task force in special education, and, and the data and the information was, was so impressive, you know, that it became part of the overall plans and recommendations of, you know, a very diverse bipartisan group that supported the work he was doing. So I think, and as a parent, I also think, you know, here's here, behavior is communication. And so your message about understanding why children are misbehaving, that it's, it is something that has to be pulled out and really examined. And especially some with the zero tolerance, which we realize now is not the way to go, where people are suspended, kids are suspended, there's got to be an alternative to that, you know, because it definitely has an effect on academic achievement. I mean, so, or the, whatever the data says, common sense can tell you that.
Right, absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Please continue.
And then this last slide here just is another example of when there are fewer discipline referrals from classrooms, the percentage of students that are proficient in the reading meet is greater than in classrooms where there are greater amounts of discipline So based on the data that we looked at last year in our conversations with Steve Goodman throughout the, throughout the year last year, the subcommittee had the following findings. We determined that, that the PBIS provides a framework for prevention and implementing theoretically sound and evidence-based practices and database decision-making. That it's a framework that aligns really nicely with multi-tiered systems of supports, and the example for that is the MyBlisD work that's been done. The committee also found that not all districts are implementing PBIS per the 2006 Positive Behavior Supports policy, which really results in different levels of understanding, differing levels of understanding for how best to support our students who are experiencing the most challenging behaviors in school. And then another finding that the committee determined was that there are barriers that currently exist related to how mental health services are provided within a PBIS or MTSS There are three current initiatives available through grants to, that are, that are attempting to address that, number three. And the, the current initiatives that are grants are the Project Aware, which is funded by the Substance Abuse Mental Health Service Administration, Safe Schools, Healthy Students, which is funded by the same organization, and then the School Climate Transformation Grant, which is funded by the U.S. Education Department. In looking again at the data and some of the findings, the, the subcommittee determined that there were four areas in which we might want to focus our work this year, and, and these would be areas that we would certainly take under consider if they were something that you would also like us to consider. In the first area of data collection and analysis, we, we might consider exploring further, are we collecting the right data? Is the data that we're going, that we're collecting really going to inform our priorities and practices around learners with challenging behavior? Are interventions being implemented with fidelity in schools that are using school-wide PBIS? In the area of systems change, can we ensure that all schools are implementing a systematically applied problem-solving model like school-wide PBIS or MTSS? Should we increase accountability for reporting challenging behavior but in a non-punitive way for schools so that we can provide support for system improvement? And how might school-based health frameworks and/or intensive intervention practices support students? And then in the area of professional learning, what professional development opportunities are needed in our schools to support prevention of challenging behaviors and implementation of school-wide PBIS with fidelity? So for instance, do, do schools and districts need guidance on conducting functional behavioral assessments or implementing effective behavior intervention plans? And then lastly, related to funding allocation, are there ways in which the current funding structure can be utilized to support implementation of the system and associated professional learning needs, and then also to address any local needs that a school or district may have? So those are just some areas, some, some questions that may guide the work that the Challenging Behavior Committee does this year, and we, we welcome your input and, and would certainly consider anything that you felt that would be helpful for us to work on as well.
Thank you very much for the report. Lupe?
I just have a question. How are you integrating the teachers in the work of PBIS?
Okay, so the, the work of MyBlisD is all about professional development. They work really to teach teachers what the research says to make sure that everybody understands what the fidelity measures of implementation really are, because the data is based on doing the correct things in the correct way. And having measures that can help give teachers feedback on whether or not they're actually doing it the way in which the evidence-based practice is designed to get them the outcome they want is an important part of really changing teacher behavior. So embedded in MyBlisD's work is a real intense coaching model to work closely with teachers so that they learn the content, but that they also have additional support for actually changing their practices as they're working with children. And that, that's part of the structure of MyBlisD and how they work with districts in buildings and classrooms to support teachers.
All right. Kathleen Stoss, please.
Thank you. This was one of the best CAC reports we've ever had. I love you.
And I would also like to know how many schools are doing this with enough, let's see, with, with a reflection that shows fidelity? Because the 2006 policy that was passed at my last board meeting was not funded, which schools should have done, been doing it as a cost of doing business, but I know that over, over time, it took until at least 2010 before a number of schools had, a lot of schools had it as a policy, that school boards did. I can't, as an outsider, when we know that this works-
Right.
The question is, what do we have to do so that schools know that and value it and start moving all, all the kids of the state towards something better? I use the example of if we know it's right, how many more years is it going to take to get it in every elementary school? Five, ten, fifteen? How many cohorts of elementary school kids are we going to lose in the process when, when we already know that it works well?
The, the 2014 cohort report that's on the MyBlisD website has some, has some data specifically related to implementation with fidelity. There are a couple, couple of graphics and then explanation that are related specifically to schools that implemented with fidelity and schools that didn't, and, and the number of behavior referrals and reading scores.
Dr. Z, and then Michelle. How do you know when it's been implemented with fidelity and when it has been implemented but without fidelity?
There, there are some measures for that, that they ask the schools and, and districts to complete.
There are very few validated fidelity measures of implementation. That is an area in the educational process that is largely in need of design. MyBlisD right now has two different types of tools that they are putting out for that larger validity testing, and they're waiting for feedback on it, but they're right now also using it with a lot of their schools to get teachers to understand the data collection points that are going to give them both the information they need on implementation and the feedback necessary to determine as to whether or not they're following it the right way.
Yeah, there's specific assessment tools that they're asking schools to use to determine, to determine that.
They're, and they, they will be made nationally available once all that validity testing is done. But it is a, it's, it's a tool they've been using for a couple of years in Michigan schools, and they can show both an increase in academic performance and a decrease in classroom behavioral referrals when there are high degrees of fidelity of implementation measures.
I'm, now I'm confused, because I thought you said we didn't really have measures of fidelity, but you're asserting that with fidelity, the, so what, which is it?
So MyBlisD has them specifically, but that's not available to all schools and all subjects for all things. It's a very limited tool that's being used around literacy and behavior that MyBlisD has developed for that purpose. But it's very, in Michigan, when you have nine-hundred and some schools, and MyBlisD is not in all of them, there are lots of schools that are operating in the absence of that. So schools that are implementing MyBlisD have the benefit of that information as part of their learning and the feedback they need on it, but it's not nationally available because it's still being validated.
Well, if MyBlisD is effective, then those five-hundred schools or so in Michigan should begin to show-
Correct.
And, and that will make it obvious to everyone that if you want your school to, to improve, to, to take this successful program. The problem I see, of course, is that you can, and I've seen this before, you know, a program that works great and grows point and, and just helps the kids, and then we try to implement it in Detroit, and because there's some other factor besides the technique and the teacher and, and his or her professional development, one of the factors that we never talk about is peer influence. That's one reason why parents want to get into a better district, because the kids will influence their kids-
Yeah.
-take studies more seriously. So how does, this factor seems to be left out of the, the approach that, that you're outlining here.
Well, the, the, the school-wide positive behavior supports is really a framework. It provides the framework for decision-making and, and implementation of interventions and supports that are appropriate for your student population. And so it's not a packaged program-
It's not a canned thing.
...that, that is handed to schools that they follow. It is, it is a framework for building those capacities, given the student population that you're working with and the, and the fact, and the teachers and faculty.
MyBlisD is operating in twenty-two elementary schools in Detroit. Steve actually is part of the, the planning committee in Detroit for student achievement and does some additional work with the city around behavior in the context of justice and the Department of Safety or whatever they are. So there's a, there's a huge push in Detroit to understand how to use this effectively, and it does respect the culture within the community. It's not a do this everywhere you live. Everybody understands the framework, but they build it out based on the demographics of children and the population and the area of the state that they're working.
And the needs of their, yeah.
Yep.
All right, Michelle, please.
Yeah, I was just gonna kind of follow up on something that Richard just said. In looking at where it's been, you know, the, the schools and the, you know, the differences with the reading scores and things like that, and then, you know, issues around fidelity, I'm wondering if you know, or if I should look at the website. So I think of issues around teacher turnover, administrator turnover, student turnover, and, and trying to maintain this, and if that's, some of the obstacles in implementing this that some of the schools may have. You know, I've talked to people around the lack of substitute teachers. They can't even get substitute teachers to do professional development. And so in a more of a systemic way, there are, what are, you know, would it be good to know what kind of things need to be dealt with in order to make this more successful? And what, I don't know if that's something that's been looked at or-
Sure. Part of what MyBlisD, MyBlisD has an organization of people who have different competencies in this bigger work. Their model is to work with intermediate school districts, staff that already are employed by the intermediate school district to train them as well as local district personnel. So MyBlisD doesn't come in and do this in a school. MyBlisD's model is to teach people who are part of the community of, of education how the framework can be utilized to meet the needs of their children. And so they provide coaching around some of the finer points, but their overall approach is really to work with existing staff around changing practice, because they don't have the capacity to just do this in all these schools. So it's, it's a training and professional development model for how to understand differently a framework that can be conducive to kind of marginalizing some behavior impact so that academic outcomes can improve with the implementation of evidence-based practices. So it's a, it's a pretty complex process, but it, it's really about changing the process that districts use. It's not something that we just come in and do to or for districts, so.
That's a problem solving model.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. We have a list of questions.
So there's a website on the last slide if you're interested in more resources about CAC and some of the information that they make available, and I'll get to follow up to your questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Questions? Next item on the committee, the whole agenda is presentation on Every Student Succeeds Act Plan. This presentation provides an overview of how Michigan is addressing the whole child through Every Student Succeeds Act, outlining opportunities and us to leverage the funds, activities, and data to provide supports to students and schools across a broad range of identified needs. This approach supports and aligns to the ESA work and with Michigan's plan to become a top-ten state in the next ten years by assuring a unified vision for best practices and a plan to provide assistance to schools that is responsive to the needs of the state's children's, families, educators, and job providers. The next step will be ongoing presentations on this. Deputy Superintendent Kiesler, please.
Thank you, Superintendent Wiston. And good morning, board members. Excited to be here talking with you about ESA again. Like Superintendent said, we'll be spending lots of time on this between now and March, so today we wanted to focus on the whole-child aspect of ESA and what we're doing there. You've seen this before, but I wanted to take a minute to return back to it. Our guiding principle for ESA is that the core of our plan is the child, their opportunity to learn, to access meaningful services to support their lives, and their ability to transition beyond their experience in our system. And noting that a big, a big component of us truly focusing on the whole child is aligning our work with prenatal through the entry into the K-12 system, and understanding that all of that works together in a way to support a, a child's progress to and through the educational system. So it's, it's a good opportunity with ESA to think about how we, even though ESA has a lot of early childhood opportunities, it is not wholly inclusive of all of the work that can go on in the prenatal-to-five space, but it's a time for us to align that and, and be cognizant of it. As we keep reminding everyone, assessment, accountability, systems of support, professional learning, funding, all of these things are vehicles and mechanisms to help us achieve that goal of focusing on individual student and child outcomes, but they're not the end goals. The goal isn't to walk away with an assessment system just to have one. The, the goal is to make sure we're driving toward what we, what we know is important to be a top-ten state in ten years. in 10 years. So our theory of action is with the learner at the center, we can leverage the supports of not only this department but a much wider range of organizations. And again, this is critical to whole child. Many of the things that we need to do to support the whole child are not going to be things that we only do here at the department. And we believe that this will lead to those increased child outcomes measured not only by test scores but by a variety of factors related to their safety, well-being, access to resources, and experience as a learner and a citizen. So here's the opportunities that ESA gives us. To return back to the tapestry analogy I keep using, the 10 and 10 is the whole tapestry. ESA is a part of the picture. And so here's some specific opportunities it gives us. To think about how this funding stream integrates with other funding streams, the funding streams that comes with ESA, so that's where a lot of our federal title funding comes from. How we can leverage these funds and opportunities across this broader spectrum, and then to create this more cohesive, unified approach to the whole child versus having silos working on different parts of what this looks like. How do we think about it as one large picture? And we want to move beyond simply identifying some needs through the use of assessment and accountability, but focus on the broader range of needs that can be identified. So when you give an assessment of content standards, you identify academic needs, but that doesn't give you a full picture of the range of needs that need to be addressed. So to be very specific and to make the pivot to, you know, big ideas to what are we actually doing with ESA, here's, and we're going to talk through these in greater detail today. We are expanding and rethinking the comprehensive needs assessment process, and I'll talk more about that. And then creating or identifying the evidence base that we need to have to incentivize use of the best practices across the entire birth-to-grade-20 spectrum in support of our 10 and 10 initiatives. So there are certain practices that we want districts using, we want providers using, we want schools or parents or everybody using, and we, the evidence base is a vehicle into that. And then we need to reshape our delivery of services here, so we give most intensive support to the districts most in need, and then targeted support to those with specific challenges, and follow-up support for LEAs where outcomes are good. So we need to ensure that MDE has this unified vision for what we mean by best practice. Sometimes for providers, for schools, for districts, sometimes what we think is best practice would depend on who you called in the department, and some of those best practices might even be at conflict with each other. So make sure that we have a unified vision. Again, this gets into the weeds a little, but we wanted to be specific about what we're doing. Ensure that our consultants who are working with districts on their ESA applications, that they're trained to know which evidence-based practices we want districts to be using. And understanding that best practice will look different across the whole-child continuum. So some of what is best practice or most effective for very young children is not what's most effective for elementary school children or high school children. And being careful to understand the different perspectives and research and learnings of each part of the continuum. So the comprehensive needs assessment process, this is a major, it's not like the cool, fun thing to talk about all the time necessarily, but it is the engine that drives much of this. It is the underlying functional thing that has to be right so we can do the partnership so we can see all the needs. So in ESA needs rule, and this is why it's so important. If a district identifies something as one of their main needs, title funds may be used to address that need. So this can include a whole range of things. It's not so narrow of you can use title funds for only this or this or this. If you can, through your comprehensive needs assessment process with data, show that these are your major needs, there's a lot of flexibility in title funding and how it can be used. And to ensure that the CNA, the comprehensive needs assessment, is whole-child focused, we need to include non-traditional partners within the process. So social workers, counselors, community members, parents of children across the continuum of ages. Right now in the department, there are a number of needs assessments. Most grant programs require that you do a needs assessment before you get the money. We're working to get to one process, maybe not just one form, that might be the longest form you've ever seen, but one process where you think, you as a district, think about all the needs that your children in your district are facing, and then you can work from there to build a series of supports. So we need it to span all areas of the need but also to be known to the other non-ESA grant areas. So we don't want an ESA comprehensive needs assessment and a needs assessment here and a needs assessment here. We want a holistic approach. Why does it matter? If the CNA allows this district to appropriately identify their needs across the whole programming spectrum, then they can make this holistic plans and they can leverage their title funds more flexibly. So we are revising our process and we're modifying our internal processes so we have fewer CNAs. And this is an important note, though. You, when you do this comprehensive needs assessment, not all needs will be funded or addressed through ESA. So now you have a visual. This is my best effort as making the tapestry that I keep talking about. Not a graphic artist, so forgive me. But imagine the box below represents the full range of identified needs. ESA and the what comes through title funding can pay for some of those needs, but then there's early childhood funding sources. And a note here on early childhood funding, not all funding around early childhood flows through the department. Some of it flows direct to districts, some of it flows to providers who aren't in districts. But when you think again from the child's perspective, that child is in a district or a school receiving services. So for a district to be able to understand all of the scope of what is coming in would be important. There's general fund from per pupil allowance, there's special education funds, there's food and nutrition funds, there's competitive grants or other agency sources. So the point is, the needs will be holistic, ESA will pay for some of them, but other things will come in and address others. That doesn't mean, though, you want a different tapestry for each need. You want one tapestry and then leverage your sources and your plans together. So now a district has identified a need, what now? They then need to identify the strategy or the intervention, and this is where we come back to the evidence-based piece of it. ESA brings us something new, new rules regarding evidence-based, so including these four levels of evidence: strong, moderate, promising, and demonstrates a rationale. And there are certain rules about what level of evidence something has to have to get to certain funds, and this is something that we see in other grant streams as well outside of ESA, that you have to use in evidence-based practice. So this brings us to our work. We have a set of strategies and practices in the top 10 and 10 that we want districts using. You know, we want districts using a well-developed, multi-tiered system of support. We want districts focusing on deeper learning. So we need to document that underlying evidence base for those strategies and then make sure that districts consider those key strategies in developing their plans and train our staff to know what we're incentivizing. The analogy we keep using here is creating a superhighway. So the practices that we most want districts using, those are the ones that are easiest to get approved to use. It's a superhighway to approval. You don't have to go find the evidence, you don't have to prove anything, well, you know, it's easier for you to use the practices that we want districts to be using. Again, I can continue to remind us that best practice will look different at different parts of the continuum. So a concrete example, approaches to developing cognitive skills in early learners are different than those in later years. And so the funding sources and best practice will need to reflect that. And remember, educators are a support as well. So when we think of supports or interventions or practices, sometimes I think we jump to programs or what are we going to do? But research shows us that having a qualified, prepared, supported teacher in classrooms with students is probably, is the most impactful thing that's going to happen. So sometimes the what are we going to do relates more to supporting the educators and leveraging their skills and talents and developing those through our federal funding opportunities. So here's an example to just put some specific details on there. District, a district goes through their, this, our new process, and they identify two major challenges: a lack of coordinated transition from early childhood to kindergarten and behavioral issues indicated by a high rate of suspensions. So then they identify a set of evidence-based practices to address both of those. And we want to, again, that's superhighway. Evidence-based practices within the 10 and 10 are qualified at that highest level of evidence, and districts encouraged by consultants to use them. And then they say, okay, how can we fund this work? Can it come through ESA? Can it come through state, local, private funding? This is where too, partnership with other state agencies, community partners, organizations is going to be really important because not every need that a district identifies can be paid for through just one funding source. And we don't want the funding sources competing, we want them working together. In the partnership model, which we've talked about a lot, in our partnership districts, we would facilitate this process of a needs assessment and identification of research-based strategies as well as bringing partners to the table. So in those districts, that process will be more supported and facilitated. And it will be vitally important to have as many partners at the table to help meet, to have many, to help meet the range of needs identified. And districts need to choose the strategies that will work best based on evidence and their own needs and their context. And then they'll need to develop and implement the plan and show progress. That's important. It's not just a plan that shows no progress. We will need to see progress from those that work. And so this process will be more intensive and directed in our partnership districts, but all districts will be going through this process on their own. Needs assessment, selection of evidence-based practices, and looking to partners to help them enact it. So, kind of to summarize, to address the whole child in ESA, we need a strategic vision about which practices are evidence-based and key in Michigan becoming a top-10 state. A process they can identify their needs, guidance and assistance, train staff, and then we need to reduce reporting burden through streamlined processes around grants, comprehensive needs assessments, and reporting so that districts are spending less time getting money from us and more time improving instructional outcomes for their students. It is not a one-size-fits-all approach. It is a matching of evidence-based 10 and 10 practices to district identified needs. And I want to make a note, I keep talking about district. In ESA and in things like state aid, the unit of work is often the district. That's where the money has to go to districts. Districts are responsible for coordinating with the state. But again, in the child's experience, they'll be receiving services from ISDs potentially, from providers, from, not everything comes through the district. So if you think of the district as like the locus of all of this, they're not the only place, though, that we interact with as a department, nor are they the only entity that is actionable upon a student. So part of this process is coordinating among all those players. And then to pivot just a little and talk a little bit about data. As we have worked through this whole-child question, and I had the opportunity to be at the School Justice Partnership Conference a couple weeks ago, one key piece that we need to keep in mind is we need to have data to identify those needs. Again, sometimes we focus on a certain type of needs because that's what we have, the data to tell us. Some, the concept or the statement of what gets measured gets paid attention to. So if we need, if we really want to focus more on the whole child, we need some key data. And so one major example we want to escalate and give the policy imperative for why we need to expand our collections here is suspension data. We do not currently collect suspension data on all students. We collect it only on students with disabilities. But that is a key indicator of behavior. And keeping kids in schools is imperative to ensuring that they learn, and we need this data as a state and as districts and schools so we can more appropriately address this issue. Why does suspension data in particular matter? Research has shown that suspension does not prove effective in changing student behavior, and even when used in moderation, it has a negative impact on school climate, which is a huge component of students actually having a place where they can go and learn and be safe. It increases the risk of a student dropping out or being pushed out. It increases the risk of involvement in the juvenile justice system, and it decreases student outcomes. So if we have this suspension data and we focus on it more as a state, we can monitor the overreliance on suspension, we can monitor disproportionate minority contact, and it can help us ensure that we're working with Michigan schools and districts to address school climate and culture issues and student behavior with other more appropriate strategies. And you just heard a presentation on positive behavior supports and how those can be used. The other note is, suspension data is not the only piece of data on behavior or school climate and culture that might be important, but it's a low-hanging fruit, one that would be relatively easy for us to collect if we agree as a state there's a reason for data. Again, we want to avoid collecting data just to have it. We're not building data monuments, we're helping children, but this is a piece of data that we could use to help children more. So we are putting forward that we think this will be an important part of our ESA implementation to make an investment into the collection of suspension data for all students. And with that, Superintendent, turn it back to you.
It's really exciting work that's being done by a large group of people to really help us move forward with ESA and address the whole child and do it in a way that makes sense and coordinates activities for kids instead of parceling these children out and not having that coordinated, reducing the amount of paperwork, reports, speeding up the process so resources can get to kids quicker. We've been working closely with the governor's office, and I think there's good partnership there on how we move forward on ESA, and we look forward to the continuing conversation. Questions? Eileen, please.
I have a simple one and a more complex one, so...
I'll take the simple one and I'll give her the complex one.
So in the last year, I know that MDE has been really focusing on data reporting simplification, overlapping things that made no sense. Obviously, with Headley, we can't require new data collection without more funding. But I asked the question at the time when you were starting that initiative whether freeing people up from unnecessary reporting would also allow us to use money that had been used before for data collection for something new? That's the simple question.
Is that a question?
We have reduced reporting by around 39%.
39%.
39%, so that's a good start, continuing that work. And we are working with SAP, and of course, and the budget allows us to hire our chief information officer or whatever we're going to call that person. And so those are things that we're working towards, is what can we, under current law, expect people to collect and not?
Okay, and so the reporting burden, though, has been reduced for schools?
Lower, 39%.
Just, I mean, for schools or for us in collating, or both?
No, and for schools reporting.
Right.
Reduce the number of reports that schools have to do.
39%?
Yes.
So we know that every organization that is trying to keep children in school wants this to happen.
Yes.
And I would really urge the department to focus on this because this is top 10 and 10, it's eventually ESA, it's all of those things, and it can be done sooner than later with a 39% reduction. To me, it should be a priority.
Agreed.
Okay.
And that's why we're putting it forward here, because we feel the same way, that we have taken away some of the things that are probably less important pieces of data, but this is a vitally important piece of data that we need to have. And districts already collect it, they have to collect it for the civil rights collection, and we also collect it as a state already for students with disabilities. So the mechanism is already there for us to get it for everybody. And now we have a policy imperative, we need it to focus on the whole child. So now's the time to say this is important information and let's get it as a state.
So the next question is philosophical and practical, and I don't expect an answer right here, okay? But I understand completely that, first of all, I want to commend everybody who has been part of a Herculean effort to try to reorganize MDE around the needs of children and schools. It's huge. And I understand completely that top 10's focus is driving the interest in filing early for ESA. But I have to say that we've just had a major election change, and it's hard to know right now exactly what will happen with ESA and the rules promulgation process. I've been asked to be part of a group of 12 people for the Education Commission of the States to do a Thinkers paper on how to push the envelope for states, for other states who are getting ready to file for ESA, but are nowhere near how fast we've pushed this for top 10 and 10. For them, this paper coming out in January is going to be timely. They're looking at holding, doing what we did this summer, next spring, and submitting next summer and fall. So I'm more than a little concerned that we may be rushing ESA submission and pulling back on implementing top 10 and 10. Again, recognizing and valuing all the work that's been going on here. I was taken aback when we were only going to be, but we were still beginning year two, looking at nine schools in three districts for direct MDE intervention with fidelity over three years, and we aren't able to do the selection process and we don't have the staffing. So for me, out of 3,500 schools, I just need to see, I mean, I need to, I want to prove that this will work before, or as a, I want to be able to move through this process with schools having faith in it, that we're doing the right work as we're submitting ESA, not submitting ESA before we've actually started that deep work of organizational efforts. I know that that would take a budget bump, it would, that's where we all look to Craig and say, hello.
It's in our request.
Yeah, I recognize that MDE is desperately trying to repurpose people, use existing staff who understand what's going on, but I don't see that we're going to get to top 10 and 30 with the plan that we've got. And I'm very anxious about that because to me, the ESA submission should be a moment to stand back, see what's coming for the rule promulgation changes, see whether we get more authority, and see whether we can do things that really will solidify our application in a way that pushing to be first one in... in a way that pushing to be first one in, man, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I think timing is a question that we'll continue to look at. Again, our, from the beginning, though, we have said, we're going to do what's best for Michigan and almost ignore the feds, and say, we're going to do what we think is right. So, that's part of the philosophy. But, you know, we still, timing's a question. Do it, we want to make sure we do this right. It's not just about getting it done and getting it in first or anything, it's about what's best for Michigan and how do we position us for success. And so, you've raised some good points, we'll continue to have those conversations. And, you know, in terms of top-10 and 10, remember, there's different things, pathways, this roadway that we're going down. Some of it is, we're going to be very specific, the three districts, three schools kind of thing. Others, ISDs are unpacking top-10 now and implementing pieces of top-10. Different ISDs are doing, working with their local districts, implementing different pieces. So, I don't want it to seem like we're only doing three schools. There are hundreds of schools that are unpacking top-10 and 10 and implementing, and I've already done, what, 15 visits, I think, this school year? And in each of those, I can see that, they're showing me the top-10 and 10 and what they're doing to implement. So, I want to be careful that we're not just seeing one view of the implementation, which is the research-based, let's do it right, let's make sure that we know how to get from a department down to an ISD, down to schools. That's an important process, that's going to be a slower process. This other process is unpacking the things that the districts can do, like MTSS, like the five-year programs, like CTE, like the early childhood visions that we have out there. So, there is a lot happening just through different pathways, and I just want to make sure that's felt out there. Because you're right, if we feel like it's just the research-based component, then, boy, we're moving way too slow. But that's not the only.
Paul. And if I can build on what the superintendent just said, you know, ESSA implementation is not divergent from 10 and 10 implementation. ESSA gives us, those evidence-based practices we talked about, those are drawn from the 10 and 10. And remember, in the 10 and 10, there's a good deal of evidence-based practices that span the whole continuum that are larger than the transformation zone. So, that's why being aligned is so important. I think your point about timing of submission is a slightly different question from 10 and 10 implementation. ESSA is 10 and 10 implementation, it's a piece of 10 and 10 implementation, it's not its own thing. And as districts, even if we wait on submitting our plan, which, you know, we could do, like the superintendent said, we've built the plan from the beginning about how do we use this as a vehicle to implement our larger goals. And districts will still be getting federal money and moving through, so while they're doing that, we want them, when they're looking at a list of practices, or they're trying to decide how they're going to address challenges in their districts, we want them moving toward the things that we know are important, as we want them considering the importance of counselors. That's a goal in the 10 and 10. We want them considering the things that we know are critical. So, they're not divergent, they're pieces. I think your point on timing is a good one that we need to discuss.
Continue to have the conversation. All right, all right, we'll go right in a row here. Start, John, and work our way down.
On the timing, did you determine, is ESSA require a formal approval by the board?
No, it doesn't, but we're not going to, I'm not going to behave that way.
I would certainly strongly encourage to get an affirmative support from the board.
Right, yeah. It doesn't require approval. It does require, I give the governor 30 days to review. The governor can choose to sign off or not, we can still submit. But I've made a pledge from the beginning, we're doing this together. State Board, Legislature, the governor, if we're going to make Michigan a top-10 state, we all have to be on the same page. If we're all on different pages, we're not going to become a top-10 state.
There's another question. Are you trying to affirmatively identify potential legislative changes that are needed in order to track the ESSA?
We're having those conversations with the governor's office and our team, yes.
And can you discuss those with the board at some point? Because I think those are important.
Yeah, well, we're working through the Legislative Committee, but we're just, we have just started that process. And there's, you know, there's different pathways we can go, so certainly we'll engage the board. And certainly, we're not moving forward without the board, so. All right, Cassandra, please.
Okay, so, I'm confused.
Okay, let's unconfuse you.
So, there were a lot of different things thrown out.
Yep.
All in, I think they're all connected. And the one thing that I'm, so, I, we have said from the beginning that we thought a needs assessment has to be done at the local level.
Yep.
And they have to identify what their needs are.
Yep.
And I think that's fabulous, that's in here.
Yep.
The piece that I'm not quite understanding is the best practice?
So, right now, let's say you're applying your local district, right? And so, you're applying for your title grants, and you want to spend your money on A, B, and C. So, A and B are research-based, evidence-based, best practices, that there's research that shows they're effective. So, we would say to you, A and B's approved automatically. You want to try something new in C as a district, so let's work together to understand what it is you're going to try, what evidence are you going to use to show us that it's going to be effective? And then, okay, we'll approve it, and we'll watch C.
Okay, so, the department's not coming up with the best practice and imposing it on the district?
No, no. What we're saying is, here's a group of best practices, you can choose any other things, not just what's on this list. You can choose other things. But if it's a best practice, whether we've approved it, or it's a best practice through research-based, that means you're going to get approved quicker. If you want to try something new, you're still going to get approved quickly, but it's, we're going to want to see a little more data and research.
We're trying to find, so in Michigan, traditionally with the local control, everybody just decides what they're going to do, and there's lots of independence, and that's great, that is part of our tradition of governance here, it is important. We privilege local district agency, and district needs are different all around the state. At the same time, what you see leading states doing is pushing certain things that there is a stronger evidence base for that lead toward our strategic goals. So, we're trying to find a space in the middle, which is, like the superintendent said, use the process to, the superhighway is the analogy I keep using. Some things are on the superhighway, and we know we want you doing them, and it'll be easy to do them. Other things, you can try other things, and if something works better with your local needs, fine, but it's not the things that we've identified in the 10 and 10 as part of our strategic goals. So, you'll, we won't pre-populate the evidence base, for example, but you can still do them. So, it's finding a way for us to be more coherent as a state, and we won't be a 10 and 10 state if we all, like superintendent said about the different, you know, the board and the governor and legislature, if we're all on different pages, we won't be a 10 and 10 state. We also won't be a 10 and 10 state if we don't have any coherence on what we do in terms of helping children. So, at the same time, we can't go from, you know, to one prescribed way that might not work in every place, so.
Right, I just want there to be an understanding that innovation doesn't usually come from the top down.
Right.
And so, to, I just want to make sure that we are not being so prescriptive, that we are losing sight of the fact that good people have good ideas, and they're not always in that one little space.
In fact, we created the Innovation Council, so districts can apply for us to provide waivers of certain things, so that they can try those innovative things. Because we agree, it's going to come from bottom up 99% of the time. And so, we actually want to incentivize and have districts try new things. It's just, if you want to try something new, great. What is it you're going to try? What's the data you're going to use to say it's effective? And then, let's work together, that's all.
Okay.
But the other thing we have to put on the table is, we have some districts that keep doing the same old thing, keep spending the dollars the same way, and we're not getting better results. So, at some point, we have to be able to say to those districts, you've tried this now for four years, and we're not getting results. We need you to try something new. We're not going to tell you what you have to try, but you need to try something new. We are going to push the envelope if we're not getting success. But if we're getting success, we want to get out of your way. If you're demonstrating success, we want you to be approved like that, we want out of your way. But right now, it can take three months, six months, nine months for you to get approved, and we want to eliminate that. All right, Michelle?
I got a couple questions. One, I do, I really appreciate the idea of providing incentives, looking for best practices, having, and the holistic approach to, you know, not just test scores. And I appreciate that work, and I know it's complicated, it's a lot harder than just letting it test course, but I think it's a much better way to measure and to fund things. So, my question is, all right, so there's going to, maybe, maybe I missed it, but, so there's going to be a needs assessment. So, my question is, who is, is there any requirements on who does that needs assessment? And what I'm getting at is, what I want to ensure is that minority populations in a community are not overlooked. So, whether it be special ed, ELL, young black men, so are there, so are ways to ensure in this assessment process, who is in there, and then to make sure it's really representative?
Yep, there's a couple layers of answers to that. There are, in ESSA, there's some requirements about who needs to be part of the process, but again, ESSA, we don't see as the end goal, we're not designing this for ESSA, we're designing it for 10 and 10, for the whole child. And especially when you look at the whole child, different parts of the continuum, early childhood actually gives us a great model for how they include all sorts of people in needs assessment processes, so social workers, parents, different groups, like you're saying, like a more holistic group of people at the table for the needs assessment. And then, once, the other, we talked about this extensively yesterday, the needs assessment's only step one. The so what, that's where you also really need a diverse group of partners to help if we're really going to address the whole child. So, the two pieces going forward, we need to come up with what's the actual process, what are the questions, what are the data? But then, we also, with the schools and districts who are doing it, work toward, and who needs to be there? Who do you, what does the process in your district look like? So, there's the actual paperwork, and then there's who. And we want to have that more, that broader stakeholder look at needs in a district. Needs and, I should say, needs sounds, that's a deficit model, needs and strengths, you know, we should call it the needs and strengths assessment, that's what we need, is a longer name for this thing.
Make it a little word.
But truthfully, that's part of it, is saying, what are our strengths, and then what are our needs? So, yeah, we are, that's one of our guiding principles that we're working towards.
Because I'm also, also concerned about, you know, accountability, especially when in areas where they may not have an elected board, where, you know, and also, you know, maybe it's because of my Detroit experience, I don't want people steering money to certain projects that they have personal gain, you know, to ensure that there's not, so empowering sometimes is really great and innovative, but when you have bad actors, it can also be corrupting.
Well, that's what the superintendent was saying, too, that tight loose, the balance of do whatever you want, but also maybe not whatever you want, and there has to be some checks and balances. And I think part of it is reshaping the role of our staff here, trying to look at ways, so the staff have really worked hard to improve our timelines on approvals, but when we, every year, approve the same big application for 930 districts, that's what we're trying to actually say, maybe we don't need to do it that way, can we reshape the work? And how can we also move into a technical assistance role where possible, so that we're not kind of doing compliance checks on everybody, so we can dive in deep with a district where we're worried that outcomes aren't happening, but also a district where we see outcomes and no risk factors, kind of move that quickly? Like, we spend equal time on everyone to some degree right now, and maybe that's not what we need to do, so.
And I have one last question.
Okay.
So, how does this work with the school reform office? So, they're talking about closing schools based on certain criteria that may or may not be consistent with whatever the department is doing, I'm not sure. So, my fear is that they may be working at cross purposes, but I know that you've been talking with the governor and working on these.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's two answers to that. One is today's world, and the second answer is the world after 1718. I think the world after 1718, or whenever we apply for ESSA.
Not 1718.
1618.
2017.
Yes, yes, a year from now. Is, you know, that we would work with all school districts moving forward unless we raised our hand and said that in the partnership model, either A, the district doesn't want a partnership with us, or B, the partnership model isn't working, we're not getting results, we would raise our hand, and then the SRO would become involved. Now, the sticky part, or the confusing part for all of us, is what happens to the districts that are currently identified and under SRO control? And I think we're trying to work with the governor's office and the SRO to work together to come up with the answer to that question. So, it's what happens now is one thing, but what happens as we march forward is a very positive thing. Again, I don't speak for the governor, so, but I mean, that's where we're working towards. Dr. Z, please.
I, if I understand the presentation correctly, it sounds like we're trying to integrate ESSA with the top-10 and 10 and everything the department does, and try to pull together all the sources of help and various grants, and that seems like a very good thing. I may have missed one or two things in what's been said so far, building off of Cassandra's question, who decides best practice? I mean, is this made, is this determined by a department here at MDE, or?
So, there's two layers to that. One is, we have in the 10 and 10 a set of things, we've agreed our strategic goals. So, those would be, and they, most of them have an evidence base, some don't, some are more innovative approaches, but we would want to, if we say those are our strategic goals, and we want districts considering them at least, when they're thinking about what they're going to do. That's the, the other part is, we need to come up with the criteria for what will qualify as evidence-based. This is, ESSA tells you you have to have it, but doesn't tell you the criteria. And then, it would be more on districts to figure out, and like I said, let me back up to this. Well, there's four levels of evidence, if I can find them.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah, I'm trying to, there's four, and the
Ending with a good rationale.
The lowest one is like, you think it might be good, basically. So, demonstrates a rationale. So, there's flexibility within all those criteria to try new things that you think. And really, in education, it's somewhat of a fallacy that we can definitively prove exactly what will work all the time. Education research has a bunch of unexplained variance in it, and always will. So, it's a cross of us trying to build, the things in 10 and 10 that have a research base, we want to, we want to push people toward, but give space.
I think I understand all that, but I have a rationale, who do I have to persuade?
Well, right, so, these are the four, in ESSA specifically, demonstrates a rationale is enough evidence for some things, but there's certain grant funding, there's certain parts of different streams that would require you to have, I think, moderate or strong evidence. But in other parts, it's just have, demonstrate a rationale. But then, it gets into what the superintendent's saying about, well, if it's not working in three years, like evidence has showed you, go the other way. So, so
Yeah, so, really, Dr. Z, it is, I'm District A, and I'm applying to the state for my funds, and I'm telling you, this is what the best practice is I'm going to use. So, they have to share with us and prove to us that these are good practices, we then approve them. I mean, that's what we do under current law.
Right.
And what we're saying is, we want to get you on the superhighway. If you pull from this list that we all have agreed to as good stuff, then you're on a superhighway and you can just do it. If you want to be innovative, try something new, we're there with you, we want a partnership with you, it's just we're going to want to know that, what data are you going to use? How are you going to know it's effective? And what timeframe? And then, go ahead and try it. If after two, three, four years it's not working, then we're going to say, all right, time to try something else. We won't tell you what to try, but we'll say it's time for you to try something else.
Now, is that located in one division of MDE?
Yes, field services.
Well, we're, yes, but we're also, the approval process is, we're also working, and we just discussed this yesterday, how, something we're still, that's still evolving is how we want to approach evidence-based overall in the department. And I think that's an open discussion still. But then, once we know what the evidence base is, field services is where the approvals happen, so they're the ones who need to know what the evidence base is. What we don't want is every person in MDE deciding what they think is evidence-based, based on their own criteria that they may or may not have.
Okay, that's one of the concerns.
That's what we're not going to do.
Sure.
We are going to have a, again, a strategic vision on what is evidence-based, a central set of criteria that are defined by a diverse group of people, and look outside, too, you know, it's, all the expertise on what is evidence-based does not sit in the department. There are lots of experts who we can bring to bear on that. So, it's still evolving, that's a piece that's still emerging, but no, it will not
Still a lot of flexibility to local districts.
Yeah, and it will not be personality-driven at the individual level.
Okay. Anything else, Dr. Z?
Follow up on this question?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Then, the other question I had was on page 11, reference to partner districts, and how do you get to be a partner district? do you get to be a partner district?
So, what we've, another piece that's emerging, we've committed to work in the partnership model. We'd like to identify a number of districts who have a, have significant need across the areas of the whole child, and could use additional supports from the districts. So, it'll be a mix, it's like a data-informed approach, a mix of where are they performing on the A to F system at the school level, but also other needs, financial needs, access to resources, and then willingness of the districts to work with us in partnership. You know, if they don't want to, okay, we'll move on to the next one, but
Not that they necessarily will align exactly, but if you want to think of the current bottom 5% list, it, probably those districts with some variance.
Okay, I guess, and then, just to, I'll just close with a concern. On the one hand, comprehensive testing sounds good, but I fear mission creep. I mean, schools are to teach a specific skills and knowledge, and it was the, it was because they, they had kind of fallen away from that is why high-stakes testing was brought in. And now, I fear, certainly there are other needs that help reach those goals, but I, one occasionally hears a description of what schools should do is being traditionally what social workers would do, or psychiatrists would do, and that's clearly mission creep. And I'm, my one concern is that, that that happened to us. I guess you do mention the connection with social workers and non-traditional partners, and certainly identifying needs that are beyond the competence of MDE and best met by some other agency is, I think that's a healthy, I think that's a move in the right direction.
Eileen, please, and then Kathleen.
So, I have two disruptive questions, and I want to again say, I totally respect everything that's going on. I just, these are things that concern me. One is that, just as Dr. Z was saying, I'm very concerned about the lack of, that schools still tend to go toward the tested subjects. To me
Schools do work to go toward tested subjects for instructional time. And we're worried about this all the time in the National Assessment Governing Board, because there aren't really good 4th through 5 assessments, 4th through 5th grade assessments of developmental skills, which I believe lead directly to employability skills. I don't know how you can possibly learn to be able to work in an organization when you're 20 or 25, if you haven't done something in the visual performing arts, sports, things that teach you how to, as a child, participate with other people, and be able to move in a direction that's a communal goal, besides excelling and learning creativity. So, I really want to make sure that that's part of all of this, and it's not a simple answer. And the second thing is, recently in reviewing what other leading international countries, countries outside the US, you know, Finland's always thrown out there as a wonderful thing, Singapore. One of the things that struck me is how much and how long ago they started really working with teachers on technology, on use of technology. They've been doing it for Australia, and New Zealand, and a number of other countries have really, since about the mid 2000s, made that part of how classrooms function. If we're going to try and make sure that teachers can differentiate instruction, which is very hard to do with a class of over 25 children, and we have those numbers in Michigan schools, what's the juggle going to be on giving them new tools? We have our responsibilities, schools certainly have theirs, within the foundation grant is the cost of doing business and revamping how they teach, but I want to make sure that as we start this whole process, that that's not left out of the equation by accident.
I, it is, so, currently in our prep standards, use of technology is important, it's something we focus on, it's something in our accountability, but I think your larger point is this point I made somewhere in here about educators are a support, too. Educators are one of the answers to what are we going to do about all these comprehensive needs, and we shouldn't forget, or act like educator development is somehow a separate thing from supporting the needs of the whole child, including tools and technology and the things they need to implement the 10 and 10, so. And then, your first question about the, I think, I think, I think that's why we really want to start, why we want to make sure this, because ESSA does have assessment accountability, and it can reduce to assessment accountability, and we want to pull it back from that and talk about the whole child and all the, and in the vision in the 10 and 10, that children are creative and critical thinkers and problem solvers, that takes a more, that takes a bigger thinking about what that, what that is for students than math and reading, or math and ELA, because that's what we test, so.
With all due respect, this is not the language that will drive that discussion, because when you say, I want to include, it's not, it is systemic. And I truly respect the way that the department has been looking at all of this, but you can't, you're going to get schools focusing on using technology badly, or not knowing what to do with their whiteboards, not knowing the importance of teaching kids how to sing or play recorders, so that they learn when to come in, and they learn to work as a group. And it's not an add-on, and if we treat it that way, which we have to already, because we can't assess it meaningfully, you know, that'll come across. So, if you're really going to try and make a different child possible, and teachers who are armed with the knowledge that they need to produce a whole child learner, I think we need to look at the vocabulary we're using.
All right, Kathleen, then we've got to move on beyond, I'm about 25 minutes behind.
Well, I agree with a lot of what you just said, yes, imagine that. But I'm also very happy that you include social workers and other health workers. I've been talking about that for years, that, I hope they go beyond the school, too, that social workers maybe go work with the families in some cases, because I think parent education is critical, and some of the, some schools don't need it, but some districts don't need it, but some districts need it a lot. And it has to be done very sensitively, very carefully, but it has to be done. And so, I think, I don't know if that figures in with the social workers and the other people, but maybe that, they would help. But I want to get back to what, the point that Eileen raised in the beginning about how ESSA might change this. We had a meeting of the Government Affairs Committee yesterday, and the staff person had done a paper of what to expect with the new administration. It's all speculation. It was very thoughtful, and very careful, but basically, it's all speculation. But some things remain the same. The law says that it should be implemented by, in the 2017, 18 year, so that's the next school year. It's unlikely that the law could be changed in the near future. It got bipartisan support in the first place, and the Senate Chairman will remain the same. The House Chairman is a new chair, she's, it's a woman, Virginia Fox from North Carolina, and her focus has been higher education. So, she's not going to get involved in this right away. The chances are, nothing's going to change right away. And the regulations, the rules, regulations will be in place probably by the end of the year. And to change that, it's a process. It's not just so easy to go in and say, we're going to change all this. And the, one of the interesting things was that, that one of the things that Trump proposed was a $20 million investment in school choice, and that's more than ever been done, and it's unlikely that they're going to approve that kind of one, because they're talking about, will they lift, they change the sequester caps, and there are all kinds of things going on, so. The chances are, this, ESSA's going to be the same for at least another year, and then worry about changing it, but. So, I like the idea, the focus on the whole child is really, I think, really a good step in the right direction. So, there are a lot of questions, everything that people raised, valid points to raise, but I've, and I'm concerned, too, that we, that it shouldn't butt down in that they teach only what's tested, because we've both been strong supporters of the law, so it's always So, that's part of the best practices, I hope.
And like, and like the superintendent said, we have not overly designed around the regs, we have designed how we use this as the 10 and 10. So, we, this was always our plan to move Michigan forward, not to meet federal requirements. So, I think that will go as it goes, and things will, whatever, but we've had the discussion about what, what supports Michigan schools. So, I think, I think we have a lot that can
Yeah, you know, with the best practices, I hope that the importance of relationships is included in the best practices. This is something that's I've been concerned about forever, that relationships are absolutely critical to dating all the other stuff, I think.
All right, we do have a card in front of you, too, where there's seven, what, three, six, seven sessions that will be held around the state of Michigan for people to get information on ESSA, and to give their input into ESSA. The first one is November 29th at Wayne Reso.
The days, doesn't give the times of the
Uh-oh, but we will get the times of the meetings.
Thank you.
Good point, yeah.
Good point. We really don't want you to come, we just wanted you to know those meetings. Kidding, kidding. We'll get to the times. Next item on the committee, the whole agenda is presentation on Top 10 and 10. We continue to work with stakeholders to develop Michigan into a top 10 education state. Chief Deputy Superintendent Norma Jean Sass has been providing monthly presentations on this multifaceted initiative. She's here to share another component of the Top 10. Joining Chief Deputy Sass will be Michelle Rybrant, State Director of 21st Century Learning, Mike McGrotre, Longitudinal Manager of SEPI, and Stephen Best.
Good morning. After, I'm sorry, I have a little voice problem, but I'm better than yesterday. I'm really excited to present this piece to you, especially after the conversation that we had. I was excited before, but now, I'm really excited, because this is about the whole child, and it is about using data for decision-making. And what we're going to talk to you about, because we need that data for decision-making for ESSA and 10 and 10, is using the geographical information systems. We went to a conference, Leadership Academy in Chicago, we had a team of 10 of us, the group that is here, as well as Wendy Larvig, Stephen Best, myself, Jeff Dietrich, and Jen Lapointe. We had also Karen Ward, who is our CSIP partner, and we had Brishera Bailey, who is our partner with Great Lakes Comprehensive Center. So, we had a really great team that worked to understand this tool, and to see how it relates to our decision-making. It is so exciting to see us be able to put a lot of data into a visual representation that is easily understandable, and to be able to layer factors, and not just the achievement data, but some of the data that we've been talking about today that really affects our learners. And the one thing, the two things that we talked about at this conference is that place matters. Where you live matters, the educational opportunities you have, the economic opportunities, the employment opportunities, the housing opportunities, all of those pieces matter and are around the place that you live. In addition to that, underneath all of this data with the maps and the place that we live are the people that are there. And so, we need to know who the people are there, and what the needs are, in order to better meet the whole child, and be able to bring our initiatives and our strategies forward. So, with that, we just wanted to give you a little taste today of what these maps are like, and what they can do. Please know that this is the very, very beginning, we're just learning this ourselves, and using it to help us, and we think it has great possibilities, and we're not even sure what all of those possibilities are yet. But I think that you'll be excited, too, after you see them.
So, the reason you don't have PowerPoint slides is actually, these are dynamic maps. Geographic information systems are effectively a database that's tied to a map. So, it allows us to visualize different kinds of things that we might be wanting to look at data-wise, but instead of seeing this in a table, we can see it in a map, shading different colors to denote different kinds of data that we're looking at. So, here, for instance, we have just kind of the outline of all of the districts in the state. And one of the things that's really nice with these kinds of maps is we can look at combinations of different things. So, for instance, if we wanted to look at a particular indicator, not just by district, but then by ISD, we'd be able to really group all of these things together by ISD right on the fly, without having to generate all sorts of new maps along the way. Mike, can you progress to our secondary here? So, one of the things that this does allow us to do is see visual representations of a wide variety of quantitative data that we might look at, or some qualitative data that's been categorized. Some of this is very basic data, so if we wanted, for instance, to look at things like enrollment by district, and be able to see, are there some districts that have stronger enrollment, and where are they? This shows you very easily, in a visual, what otherwise we would have to look through tables and other forms of data to be able to see. And so, we can, for instance, zoom in on any particular area, and be able to see enrollment, and it will give us the dynamic change with this coming right in. And again, we could, if we wanted, Mike, could you click on the legend, just so we can see? Here, this is giving us a gradation of colors of green based on enrollment, and we can change some of those different thresholds if we wanted to, right on the fly, so that if we knew a particular law might be relevant for districts over 2,000 students or something, we could easily change this kind of thing and see information as we go. Let's move on to the next piece here. As we were looking through the data during this workshop that Norma Jean mentioned, we had the opportunity to look at a wide range of data and see the variation this tool provides. And one of the really nice factors, could you just zoom in a little bit more on the state here? And, there we go, just a little bit. And you'll see, the map is, again, quite dynamic, and you change one side of this, and we're changing the other side. And what we're able to do is see multiple variables at once, because we know that sometimes one single variable might not give the whole picture. For instance, if we looked at graduation rate and dropout rate, we might think that a low graduation rate means a high dropout rate. But we have this little slider that we can move from one side to the other. Here, we're looking at graduation rate, here, we're looking at dropout rate. And what this might allow us to do is look at those kind of unique dynamics of, well, maybe a low graduation rate in a four-year period means that they're not necessarily having a high dropout rate, but they're capturing some of those students for a fifth year, and they're doing credit recovery programs really well, or other kinds of things. And so, one of the beauties of these tools is having this slider where we can easily manipulate this. If you think back to textbooks of old, think back to like, your old biology textbook, that had all of those cellophane sheets for the skeletal system and nervous system and everything else, where you can move one over the other, this is effectively the same kind of thing. It allows us to do a great deal of analysis dynamically. Here, let's move up to the fourth area that we looked at. One of the things we can do is we can look, again, at multiple variables for a particular category. Here, rather than looking at districts just as geographic bounds, which are our traditional districts, we can look at something at the building level, and plot buildings out. And what we have is two sets of data that we're looking at. We often think of achievement data as, what is the number of students that are proficient? But the achievement data we have is broken into four categories. It's advanced, proficient, nearly proficient, and not proficient. And sometimes, it's those numbers in the categories of not proficient, as we have showing up here, that can really inform what we need to do. If we have a school with a preponderance of students in not proficient, then we know we're struggling with something. Whereas, over on the other side, this is advanced proficient. And so, we're able to look to see, are there some districts that, as Lillian suggested earlier, are moving forward with some of the top 10 efforts, to the point where they are engaged in deeper learning, and they have a high percentage of students who are advanced proficient in some of those standards? Michelle, could you give us some other examples as well of some of these kinds of variables that we could look at?
Yeah, I think on the left-hand side, that is really a good indicator of how MTSS program is going, because that not proficient category, and those schools that are in dark blue on that left-hand side have a higher percentage of students that are not proficient. So, what you would be looking for are changes in that status as MTS is fully implemented. And then, conversely, the schools that are yellow on the left-hand side have a very low percentage of students in that not proficient category. So, it would be a way to identify schools that have effective MTSS systems in place, and what are they doing? and what are they doing to keep that number of students in Level Four low? And what MTSS systems do they have in place? This is all third-grade ELA, so it's also relevant to the retention law, and where do we need to focus efforts on over the next couple of years? The schools that have the greatest percentage of students in that not proficient category. On the right-hand side, I would be looking at that as an early indicator of rigor and deeper learning. If those were strategies that schools had outlined in their school improvement plan, this would be a way to monitor success toward those strategies, because you'd be looking at the increase in the level of student, or percentage of students in the advanced category.
We're looking at all of this data right now, obviously, at a very large scale at the statewide level. But one of the beauties of looking at systems like this is you can really drive down to much lower kind of green sizes, so that if we were in ISD trying to look at exemplars within our ISD service area for MTSS or for other kinds of things, these things would be highlighted right away. The beauty of this is we can zoom in, zoom out, to be able to address questions not only at the state level, but these same kinds of systems can support at the regional ISD district and even building level, because you could look at individual student data as well mapped here. Why don't we look down to our last example here? One of the things that we were doing in Chicago is, we were, as Norma Jean mentioned, one of ten states that came there, and we were asked to come not only with sets of data, but with some questions for purpose to this. It wasn't just, let's throw the data here and see what we see. It was really to try and get at some issues. In particular, we were looking at the notion of the transformation zone and where we might find potential areas to focus on that would show representative examples, not just high-intensity needs, but representative examples of what we're going to see in the state. And so one of the beauties of this is, rather than looking at an individual variable, we had the ability, within this legend here, to look at multiple things layered on top of each other. So here we have chronic absenteeism, economic disadvantage, English language learners, and graduation rate, all layered on top of each other with variation. So when you see this variation in color here, what that's basically showing is some differing levels of all of these indicators grouped together. What we were looking at in particular were areas that had a diverse mix of all of these kinds of things, not just perhaps heavy need, but an area that is going to be, again, more representative of the variation that we have in the state. We have the ability to do this with lots of data sets. These were just four. Mike, I'm wondering if you could share, what are some of the other kinds of examples that we could put into a map like this?
The Michigan statewide longitudinal data system actually has metrics that we use for compliance reporting and for publishing on the MySchoolData website. We have head counts, program participations, post-secondary outcomes, school finance data, school staffing data. We've got metrics and raw data on all of those, on those subjects, and we've got the assessment data. We can look at the data longitudinally, so we have many years of this data loaded in there, and it's all connected so that we can build more of these maps or other reports from those.
Absolutely. So this, as Norma Jean said, is really just a glimpse into the kinds of analyses we could do. We were all gathered around some different TV monitors as Michelle and Mike and Dan as well from SEPI were working on different data sets, incorporating new data sets in to be able to see not only education data, but overlays of health data, overlays of housing data, overlays of other kinds of things that can really help us make very appropriate targeted decisions about the things we need to do and not just be second-guessing, saying, "I think that's true." One of the things that was really interesting about all of this data, not only for us here in Michigan, but I think for all of the states as they were looking at their data, is it challenged assumptions that we often make and that we often use in our decision-making. And so this is a wonderful tool. We're looking to really expand on the use of this as we make more decisions about the targeted efforts that are required in the top-ten and ten, so that we can also be very efficient about this work and not just try and kind of move our way along grudgingly. We can really analyze areas that we can focus on, targeted geographic areas that we can focus on, and work with those ISD districts to be able to make some decisions, implement them quickly, and see what the results look like very quickly. So we're glad to share all of this.
Very interesting. Thank you.
Elaine, please.
So you people who do the data crunching, when I started on the National Assessment and Governing Board, I chaired nominations, and we used to require that all of our psychometricians be able to go out drinking with us. And I would like to say that the same thing is absolutely true for working with the National Center for Education Statistics. What you do is absolutely invaluable to all. How you get it across to people is one, it's like crossing the Rubicon. It either happens or it doesn't. So I have significant confidence in both MDE and SEPI that the frustration level with what's been going on is so high that your motivation to change is probably even higher than mine. But I just want to point a couple of things out which are important. I chaired reporting and dissemination, and that role, you know, I had the head of NCES, National Center for Education Statistics, on my committee, governors, people who really needed to use this. But in the end, we figured out nationally that there were fewer than 5,000 people who needed to have the in-depth data that was being developed for policymaking and for research. The rest of it nationally was general public. So as you do this, I don't, we missed the boat in a couple of different areas when we were developing websites, despite having all of NCES there and all these people on the governing board, we still missed the boat on what parents actually needed to be able to digest things. I love the bells and whistles on the screen. I love that you might, can you go to a dot and have the data for that school pop up? It doesn't get any better than that unless the data is not usable, because parents don't know what to make of it. So I don't know what exactly is needed. I know that we had, that the governing board had a carefully, 26 people who were selected from different walks of life and who were able to weigh in on this, like, no, that wouldn't work for me. And I don't know what it's going to take to get that honed to the point where the incredible acumen that you have, the data that's been collected that's really useful and necessary, can be translatable to the rest of the people in the state who aren't going to use it for research. And that, to me, is, again, if you don't have the voters, the parents, the kids, the people who walk on the streets, being able to just go to that, that would happen, we 've missed, we will miss the boat again, and nobody wants to do that.
All right. I've got about a half hour to get two presentations, so we're going to move on.
Can I just say one thing?
Yep. If you can.
Because I forgot to mention Daniel Churchman, who was also a part of our committee in SEPI, but this is a great partnership that we have to get all of this done, so I didn't want to leave anybody out.
Thank you very much. Next, I am on the committee. The whole agenda is presentation on the proposed standards for the preparation of teachers of English as a second language and bilingual education. These two standards were updated to improve alignment between educator prep policy in Michigan and the Every Student Succeeds Act to support the top-ten strategic goal three and strategy 2.2C. These standards will replace Michigan's current teacher endorsement standards as the guiding set of standards for initial teacher prep and in-service professional development, English as a second language and bilingual instruction. Next step is public comment, and both sets of standards will take place in December and early January, where formal approval of the standards should be requested at the January board meeting. Two presenters today, first is Leah Breen, Director of Professional Prep Services, and Sean Kotke, Education Consultant, Professional Prep Services. Please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a routine action. We regularly review and update educator preparation standards based on a variety of reasons. We always bring them for board approval. That is the emphasis today, and Sean is going to walk you through the process that we went through to update these, the reasons, the rationale, and our conclusions.
Great, thank you. To reiterate, our purposes for ESL and bilingual teacher preparation standards are three-fold. One is establishing a shared vision for the knowledge and skills that our teachers of ESL and teachers of bilingual education should have in Michigan, to guide educator preparation programs in the development and assessment of their program effectiveness, and to support those institutions as they seek national recognition and accreditation in these areas. So why are we bringing this to you now? First is the issue of currency. These standards were last reviewed in 2004, and time lunes, we brought you the World Language Preparation Standards in 2015. Back in 2004, all of these sets of standards were in one package, and so it's turned right now. And then urgency, perhaps the biggest reason to do it now. We have a critical underserving of a large and growing population of English learners in Michigan. Last year, 733 FTEs, full-time equivalents, were dedicated for 90,121 eligible ELs, English learners in our state. We bring this to you also because it supports achievement of, as Brian mentioned, Goal Three and Strategy 2.2 of the top-ten intent to support the achievement of our English learners. A quick overview of the standards' development process, really give a lot of thanks to the Office of Field Services. They have an English learner advisory committee that helped us immensely in getting these standards updated. In 2015, that advisory committee engaged in some strategic planning that developed some belief statements, which I'll share in the next slide, and as part of this was dedicated to improving teacher preparation in this area. Also, last year, of course, the state board approved new world language teacher preparation standards. First half of this year, the advisory committee formed some work groups to review these two sets of standards for appropriateness and to recommend changes to them. And in the second half, we've taken this set of proposed standards and presented them at OFS's Special Populations Conference. It's been shared again with their English language advisory committee, or English learner advisory committee, the Michigan World Language Association Annual Conference, and then now today with you. And then from here, we go into a period of public comment where we'll solicit feedback from the field. These standards are rooted in three core belief statements that the Office of Field Services English Learner Advisory Committee developed, and I'd like to share them with you for the record. We're committed to provide intensive, intentional, and appropriate instructional opportunities that meet the unique needs of English learners, ensuring their academic success by advocating for educational equity and excellence for bilingual, multiliterate students in a global society and by modeling social justice. We are committed to teacher preparation, leading to multiliterate global citizens who will make contributions to economic, social, civic, technological, and cultural advancements. In doing so, we commit to educational equity and respecting diversity while accessing student background knowledge and experience. And we are committed to build on the funds of knowledge that students bring to their learning communities with an asset-based mindset, and to create a climate that welcomes, honors, and respects diversity, multilingualism, and their cultural contributions. Brief overview of these standards, they are comprised respectively of 38 and 39 standards, bilingual and ESL, and they're grouped into six domains. These domains are fairly traditional, they resemble the domains that were in the world language standards, language linguistics and comparisons, that includes teacher language proficiency in the languages that are being taught, cultures, literatures, and cross-disciplinary concepts, second language acquisition theories and instructional practices, integration of standards into curriculum and instruction, assessment, and then professionalism. So what are the highlights? I think I have an overview. There's strong continuity with the current standards in terms of the core competencies and foundational knowledge of linguistics, of second language acquisition processes, and cultural perspectives and instruction. A lot of those are largely unchanged, however, there are several language updates in the standards. One is changing limited English proficient to English learners in the ESL standards and multilingual learners in the bilingual standards to reflect two things. One, the update in ESSA, which uses English learners. And secondly, to stress an additive and reciprocal value of multilingualism, rather than taking a deficit perspective on these students in mastery of content area curriculum and their developing English proficiency, which is an additive and reciprocal value in multilingualism. The assessment literacy standards have been strengthened. They more clearly define the specific competencies in assessment that ESL and bilingual education teachers need in assessing English learners, rather than general assessment standards that would apply to all teachers. And they contain some new standards with more detailed knowledge of instruction and assessment accommodations, how do you accommodate for ELs and for multilingual students, and understanding distinctions between second language acquisition and learning disabilities, so we can properly serve students and not improperly label them in special education. One of the other key features of these is defining the primary roles between teachers of bilingual education and teachers of English as a second language. Our office receives frequent inquiries from schools on the distinctions between the two credentials and the appropriate placements, what kinds of instructional settings should they be, can they be put into? And these new standards attempt to make a clearer distinction between the two, although it is fairly nuanced. Our teacher bilingual education, their primary role is to promote educational equity by making content curriculum accessible to students whose home languages are not English, and they do this by providing content area instruction, so science, social studies, math, in the students' home languages. They also support maintenance and development of literacy in students' home languages and provide direct instruction in English language and literacy. The key difference then with the teacher of ESL, they also promote educational equity and academic achievement of students whose home language is not English. But their role is delivering instruction in English, in how to speak, read, write, listen, and communicate in English, and to support acquisition of content knowledge and academic vocabulary while students learn English. A bilingual education teacher delivers instruction in the student's home language; the ESL teacher does not. Perhaps the biggest change in these standards is a realignment of language proficiency standards for teachers. That's standard 1.1 in the document. And the most radical is in the bilingual standards. The realignment in the bilingual standards is intended to expand the pool of teachers to seek this endorsement. It has been a request from preparation institutions for over a decade. The 2004 standards specify a language proficiency standard of superior in English and a target language, so if they're bilingual Spanish, then in Spanish, bilingual Chinese, in Chinese. We have realigned this on the advice of the advisory committees and work groups who were put together these standards to advanced low in English in the target language, which aligns with the highest level of language proficiency expected by teachers seeking world language endorsements, and by specifying the assessment that will be used to determine that teachers have achieved this level, using the oral proficiency interview. In the world language standards, that's, we moved from a variety of testing protocols in the language to specifying the oral proficiency interview because of its high validity, high reliability, and greater currency in the field. And what really convinced the work groups that the advanced low standard would be the best and most appropriate for bilingual education is when the advanced low credential, at that level, candidates can communicate with accuracy, clarity, and precision to convey their attended message without misrepresentation or confusion, because it's key that they can deliver content instruction to children without misrepresentation and confusion, to the extent that their speech could be understood by native speakers unaccustomed to dealing with non-natives, even though there may be some repetition or restatement required. For ESL, we've changed from saying superior to, in English, that candidates For ESL, we've changed from saying superior to, in English, that candidates will demonstrate an ability to serve as effective models of spoken and written English, as demonstrated by successful completion of coursework in an approved program and required assessments for teacher licensure. That aligns the language of our standard with the national organization for teachers of ESL. So the next steps are to release these standards for public comment. We anticipate doing that through early January 2017, if not cutting it a little bit earlier in December, and a final presentation with an adoption recommendation to you at the January 10th meeting.
Questions, please. Dr. Z?
On page five, you use examples of Chinese and Spanish. And I know that Chinese is actually a number of mutually unintelligible dialects. What standards? And I got to think that those in Chile speak a different, I don't know if they are immediately understood by folks in Spain. So what are the standards for?
Sure. In Michigan, we use Mandarin Chinese. That's our standard in the World Language. And then the bilingual standard is for that. With Spanish, it is typically sort of Central Mexico broadcast Spanish.
Okay. All right. The other question I had was, oh, yes, modeling social justice. Social justice is kind of a code term, and I was wondering if you'd unpack that for us.
For that, I could defer to my colleagues in OFS. Maria, would you like to speak for that? This is part of their belief statements.
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear particularly what the question was.
What is meant by social justice in the belief statement?
Well, when the group convened, and Michelle also was there. And so when the group convened, we looked at what the national standard said in belief statements, not only from the National Association for Bilingual Education, but we looked at some belief statements also from the TESOL group, the International Teachers of English Speakers of Other Languages, and looked at what their belief statements were. And we tried to incorporate then the spirit of all of that. And trust me, it was a lot more. But what they really focused in on was modeling social justice, that teachers as professionals come to the classroom with a set of beliefs about what students bring to the classroom, the respect of their culture, of their diversity, and of their language, and basically saying that we as teachers and professionals know inherently that language is tied to and inherent part of who the person is and who the child is and where that child comes from. And so by our actions within the classroom as bilingual education teachers, we are demonstrating that we model that social justice and equality and equity for students when we are prepared through not just the coursework that teaches us about linguistics and how language has evolved, but also having that cultural competency to work with children and families who are coming to us from varied cultures and languages. And so that is saying that as teachers, we model that. We model that for our schools, in our buildings, in our interactions with colleagues, in our communities, and more importantly, that we develop a sense of respect and honor for our children and families in that school, in that community.
Okay, Lupe?
So I still didn't understand what you mean by social justice.
Social justice is, I guess...
Well, the way the teacher would model social justice in this is by understanding the children's native language proficiency as an asset that can be built upon in learning English and learning content area instruction, rather than regarding those students from a deficit perspective as empty vessels, blank slates, but using that home language.
Well, I think respect for other cultures and languages is certainly part of the scholar's creed. But I've encountered places where social justice is a code word for class envy.
Class what?
Class envy.
Oh.
I also, I have observed for many years that people talking out of two sides of their mouths. We want to honor the culture of these kids, but when a child exhibits machismo, then we certainly teach them what our American values are. And so I'm concerned that, I guess I'm concerned with what language means, what it covers. And too often, we cover the difficult choices that we have to make through general language. The circles I've traveled in social justice, as I say, is a code term for a political program. And I'm concerned to see that here in a set of beliefs for our public schools.
And these beliefs are written by our English learner advisory committee, and he is happy to take those concerns back to them.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Kevin, Lupe, and then John.
It's my turn, but you see. Well, I truly like the word "social justice." Education is social justice. And I am very involved with social justice as the chairperson of the committee to Iain S. Chavez. And so I appreciate that. Also, I am an endorsed bilingual teacher, okay? So I welcome this set of standards, but I have many, many questions that I would not take the time to ask here, but I would like to meet with you and so I can go over a lot of concerns that I have and how bilingual and ESL has been implemented in many schools in the state. And teachers call me and voice their concerns. So I want to see how the department can help the teachers or help the schools to help the teachers reach the education of these students.
Thank you for that.
I will set up an appointment.
Good.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. Happy as a team to meet with you on that.
John, please.
Thank you. And I wanted to, I guess, provide encouragement and support for this topic and your work. And just note, you know, the growing numbers of non-English speakers, particularly Latino, are a huge growing part of our family in Michigan and around the country. And we do need, and they often have achievement gaps that are more significant, and we do need more effective ways to engage them in learning and help them succeed in learning and become full participants in our society. And I think your fraternity of professionals, discussion particularly given current events about ensuring that professionals and educators are treating these young people, whatever culture they come from, as first-class citizens, not giving hints of second-class citizens or looking down on them in some way, is what you are trying to reiterate in the language of affirming the value of social justice in the classroom. And I think that's laudable and necessary.
Can I say something else?
Yep.
Because this is very prevalent right now as we've been going through the last two weeks, and so pertaining to social justice. And you know, I have a very special picture right here. Very special picture. This is my beautiful granddaughter, Amelia Rose. She's seven years old, in second grade. And when Amelia comes to me and talks to me about we're going to be separated, I hear that in the playground that my family's going to be separated from me. And so that's very powerful. And so these children that we're talking about, they are living it. Amelia's hearing it. She's feeling it. So this subject and these standards are extremely very important. And yes, the Hispanic population is growing by lipstick bounds. I'm getting a lot of calls from parents, community, and so on and so on. This cannot happen in our schools in Michigan if we want to be the top 10 and 10. I'm an educator by heart. I'm a board member now. And we all have to be cognizant of the fact that we are responsible in supervising the education of all students. So I don't want my grandchild to be in fear and hearing all these things. So we've got to change the culture. It is social justice. We have to change the culture of what's happening because on the playground, they're talking about this subject. And we cannot let these little minds, you know, think that this is a world of fear in the education. Their schools are going to be full of fear all the time. So I support you 110 percent. I was bilingual myself. I am bilingual. You can hear it in my accent. Plus, I'm Texan, so that makes it a little more...
All right. Thank you very much for being here. I appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry. Kathleen?
Yeah. Is this sort of like immersion, the bilingual that they're taught in their native language?
That's a model, an instructional model. It's not the only.
Because, you know, the Academy of the Americas in Detroit was many years ago, right? It was terrific. The kids learned to both Spanish and they were learning English at the same time. So I think this is sort of, I wondered if this is a sort of modeled after that immersion itself.
This change in standards would hopefully produce more teachers who are equipped to teach in immersion programs, which we know school districts want and which we're experiencing a current shortage.
We advise them to get teachers who have a bilingual credential. And a bilingual credential is always paired with some content, so it's bilingual social studies.
I got Michelle, and then Eileen.
And I just wanted to say, I agree with Lupe completely about social justice. It's treated people with equal opportunity. I'd never heard this code word before. That's a brand-new, brand-new to me. I thought social justice was a good, positive goal. And I'm just stunned by that. So it's treated people with respect and caring, compassion. I'm just stunned. Anyway, I wondered if you haven't, we're giving enough time for this because we're going into the Thanksgiving season and the holiday season, and people are not going to be paying attention to a lot of stuff on the email, maybe. And I wondered if you're pushing this a little bit too fast. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
No, I was...
We could certainly give additional time for public comment if that's a concern of the board. We typically don't get a lot of feedback on educator preparation standards, and those standards, we get a lot more in K-12 curriculum content than we do educator preparation standards. These, since they are aligned pretty closely to the 2004 standards with, you know, the updates that Sean mentioned, we're not expecting a lot of concern. And that's typically where we do get feedback is when people are concerned.
I was concerned about the holiday season.
This is a good point.
Yeah, absolutely is a good point.
All right, then we got...
Do you have to do it by January?
I know, I got everything.
You know, that's a new board.
No.
No.
Going on the first meeting.
Yeah. Well, and that is why we're bringing it back for presentation in January. Typically, when we bring these back, they're on the consent agenda for approval unless you ask them to be removed. But we are intending and doing a presentation in January for the new board members. So you'll hear this information again. And how about, so my thinking would be, we could bring the public comment at that time if there's concern that there hasn't been sufficient public comment. We could certainly extend it.
Yes. Michelle, Eileen, Dr. Z.
I'm glad there's a recognition. I know in Detroit, southwest Detroit, where my children go to school, there's a lot of Spanish-speaking kids, and there's a real need to have more bilingual teachers. So I, you know, support the effort to try to address that and get those kids there because they're really needed. And I also wanted to respond to your remark, Richard, about social justice. I fear, you know, I heard on CNN that Newt Gingrich was going to be talking about reconvening the committee, the Un-American Activities Committee. And in education and what's being taught becomes a hotbed of what is politically inappropriate or what is politically appropriate. I would hope that whatever the political bent is, that justice for our society is not considered a bad word and for everyone in our society, even if it means that they learn about their rights, that they have the right to be treated equally, even if it means the same as, you know, regardless of your income, we're all citizens, we all deserve to be treated with respect. I think that's a strong American value based on the principles of equality that are embedded in our Constitution. And I think coding that as a negative is, has a chilling effect. And I think the department should not let be chilled in that area. I think we should boldly support social justice.
Eileen, please, and then Dr. Z.
So the election result is, and the things that have happened since then are clearly tempering our comments. The thing that I wanted to say, because I made a series of edits that are for clarity, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I'm reading this, and it's not the same thing. We're talking about this one statement, "We're committed to build on the funds of knowledge students bring to their learning communities with an asset-based mindset." To me, what you said about that first language is an asset, not a deficit, is much clearer and much more concise. So I would look at it for what's really going to make sense to people, not a formulaic expression. "The best social justice of all is competent instruction that leads to children become successful adults." And if there were a comment I'd make about social justice, to the extent that that phrase misses the fact that this is all about, connecting kids with knowledge in a complex situation where they don't understand the curriculum and doing it as quickly as possible, it's just sort of common productive. So I have just some thoughts that I'd be happy to give you. And I also wanted to make sure that you folks that had a chance to see Howard Stevenson's new, the ELA, I could talk to you about that afterwards. But there's new iPad programming that's available to help ESL teachers with quick instruction that kids can have on their own, and it brings them much faster to the ESL table so that teachers can be more successful. It's proven to be effective, and it's working in other states. So it's only a question of cross-pollinating. They appear before the House End Committee, so.
Thank you, Eileen. Dr. Z, please.
Yes, I'm not willing to accept the easy platitudes that are thrown out here. Words have meanings. Here's the Wikipedia definition of social justice. "Is the fair and just relation between the individual and society, this is measured by the explicit and tacit terms of the distribution of wealth." I don't...
Wikipedia is not a smart...
Okay, please, please do not rely on it. Dr. Z, please.
...understanding, and I will be pardoned if, in the lack of any other explanation, that I fall back on the common understanding of what social justice is and the political freight that it carries. If you want to avoid political discussion, then you need to avoid politically loaded terms. And I say that more for my colleagues than for you.
I don't even see it.
Even in this very discussion, we were told we have to change the culture at the same time we're going to respect culture. There are contradictions. There are also the very things that are concerned here, looking down on others. A Mandarin-trained Chinese, there's no temptation to look down on the Sichuan or the Cantonese-speaking Chinese. These issues are not, are not black and white, but they are many shades of gray. And that's why we need to be unsatisfied with platitudes that sweep the real conflicts that develop on the ground level under the rug.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to...
Thank you, Dr. Z.
Can I add a little clarity?
Sure. Okay.
So the, I just wanted to remind the board, the belief statements are the belief statements of one of the stakeholder committees who provided feedback on the standards. And I would invite you to look at the standards themselves, particularly two and five, which would reflect some of the content that you're concerned about, and let us know if you have feedback on the standards that were as a result of stakeholder feedback and, you know, let us know if there are concerns.
Thank you for that. All right, we're going to move on to the last presentation before we break for lunch. Next item on the committee, a whole agenda is presentation on 21st Century Community Learning Center programs and out-of-school time. This presentation will provide an overview of the current status of the 21st Century Community Learning Centers program and the field of out-of-school time and mission field of out-of-school time in Michigan. The authorization of every student to see Texas and the goals to see Michigan become a top 10 education states in 10 years makes this an ideal time for an increased understanding of this program and the initiatives currently underway. Kathleen Strauss has been a staunch supporter and her work in this area has been recognized by national organizations. Presenters today are Richard Lauer, Director of Preschool and Out-of-School Time Learning, and Lorraine Forson, Coordinator of the 21st Century Community Learning Center Programs. You're between the board and lunch.
Yes, we know that precarious position.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to review the 21st Century Learning Program and show you and highlight some of the exciting activities we've been engaged with over the years. 21st Century CCLC Grant Program started under the No Child Left Behind federal statute in 2003. Now, it's continued on in ESSA and it is considered under Title IV Part B as a separate program from the other title programs. Its purpose is to really to target high-poverty, low-performing schools, to be able to provide additional supports to the student body that extend beyond the school day and reinforce education from the school day as well as give different types of opportunities outside of the school day to extend that learning. Currently, we roughly have about $37 million coming into the state of Michigan under this federal pot of money. It funds 53 grantees and they are representative of a wide spectrum, local school districts, community-based organizations, as well as universities. And those 53 grantees provide programming for over 270 sites across the state of Michigan. It is a competitive grant program that grantees compete on a three-year cycle for a five-year grant. And so to date, through 2015, we've served over 300,000 students in the 21st Century program. You'll see here the breakdown of how it looks on elementary, middle, and high school. We cross the K-12 spectrum. And more importantly though, is the bottom graph that really shows our competition in these past three years on the actual need for out-of-school type program. But more importantly, quality out-of-school type programming is something that the field is interested in and wants many more applications than we're able to fund. But 21st Century is not just childcare. Some think it is. Some think it's just a latchkey program after school. But importantly, it is a place to provide a safe place for after-school hours. But the purpose really is to provide expanded academic enrichment opportunities as well as additional activities designed to complement their regular academic program and build life skill development. Limited programming is also available for the families of the children and youth enrolled. At this point, all 21st Century Community Learning Center sites are required to follow the State Board of Education's Michigan Out-of-School Time Standards of Quality. They're all required to be licensed through LAURA. And for those high school grades that are not under the purview of licensing, the standards are aligned with licensing and therefore it applies in that setting. We require, as part of the grant, operation of 32 weeks during the school year with an additional six weeks of mandatory summer to be able to ensure there's a continuity of learning and that summer learning loss is minimized. And all schools, we require in the program to provide after-school snacks as well as suppers when available. At this point, I just want to show a short video highlighting at least three of our programs for you.
I'm really excited about being here because I have a really strong passion for science and math. I did a whole college experience along with that. It's the opportunity like no other.
I had researched game design, but it was my first time ever executing it. So I was worried. But in the beginning, it was really easy and I was feeling really good about myself until we found out that we kind of had like train wheels on. So then we kind of did it the hard way and it ultimately felt better when you know you did it like tranch instead of standing on top of something so.
I didn't know what to expect to begin with, but from what I have experienced so far, I love it. And I'd say to say I definitely exceeded my expectations.
UCAS has impacted my life in many ways. They took us to a lot of fun and educational features like the Charles H. White History Museum. They took us to the Art Walk Downtown. But something else about UCAS is that most of my friends are in UCAS. So after school, we could study and that really brings my heart to it because it's a lot easier to study with friends than it is for me to study by myself. And UCAS really helped with me not being so shy. Like I can talk to people. I can present things now. And we did a lot of team building activities and I grew really close with a lot of my, like, learning guys. And UCAS was just a great experience for me.
He just taught us real basic things like how to think the terrain, what it was, how to do it. And after that, we started getting into deeper stuff. By the time we got into deeper stuff, it was just me and.
She, she told me about Game Start. And when she told me about what it was about, I only saw that I wanted to be in that club because that club would be everything to the kids. I love game design quite a lot.
And I came back for like the last two sessions and we finally put it all together. Came up with the idea and all of that and it worked out.
It was like really worth it knowing him as a person. Because like, at first, I didn't know he had these skills. But then last session, here you go.
While at UCAS and some of UCAS students, we get to do fun things while we're learning. And that's cool. Plus, I love the UCAS directors and how they do things.
Just kind of try and make a game just by making, well, not, I had the template, but making the game was probably the hardest part because I had to just come in and start with everyone else. So it was pretty hard to like just start doing it.
Awesome. Like seeing a lot of intelligent people working in my group has been awesome. It's not like I have to worry about, oh, man, I'm stuck with someone who doesn't want to pull their weight. Everyone in the team has been working hard to get this project to be what it is. And I like seeing, you know, people that are all trying to get, get to the same goal and make something out of it.
Thank you. That was just about three of the 277 programs that we have around the state and that only showed some middle school and high school kids. We also have a lot of elementary programs that work with elementary-age children as well. And that just shows you some of the kinds of ways that they're integrating before, after-school activities with what they're learning during the school day and finding ways to, to really expand on what the students are learning. We currently have three grants that we use as statewide activity grants that provide services to all of those sites through the state and help to provide services to the Department of Education. Michigan State University serves as our statewide evaluator and has since the inception of the 21st Century Programs at the state level. It's, their evaluation has been shown as one of the model programs in the country. And we get, often get asked by other states, how do you do it? What do you do? And what's, what should we do to model the program, the evaluation that you guys are doing? If you'll look in your packets, there's a small brochure that tells a little bit about some of the facts of 21st Century. But then there are several fact sheets that our statewide evaluators have done over the years to highlight some of the activities and some of the findings that we've had with 21st Century. So the first six, five pages are that, those documents. We also partner with the Center for Youth Program Quality, which is out of Ypsilanti, Michigan. It's a national center that has connected with the Forum for Youth Investment at the national level. It started out at Highscope. You may be familiar with the Highscope model. And they have helped us to develop a program quality assessment tool. We partnered with them from the very beginning of their program quality assessment. And we developed what we call the Youth Program Quality Intervention Program, where we hire coaches through the Wykurt Center to go to our sites to help them to build better programs and to help to provide high, strong quality based on those model standards. And then we also partner with the Michigan After School Partnership, which does the collaboration and capacity building work in the state. They have brought together partners from 40 different organizations around the state and have worked with us to build capacity for all out-of-school time programs, not just the 21st Century sites. So that is one of our mandates through the funding, but it's also something that the Department of Education has shown to be something that's important to all of you. The Michigan After School Partnership also helped us to write those model standards. We had a committee that was developed to help write those model standards. They've worked with us on the Great Start to Quality School Age Design Project for the Quality Rating and Improvement System for Childcare Centers. They've worked with us on developing core knowledge and competencies and adopting those for all state workers who work in out-of-school time programs, youth development workers. We've been working on a digital badges project, which I'll tell you a little bit more about in a minute. And we've been emphasizing high-quality STEM, or Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, in out-of-school time programs through the Michigan After School Partnership Initiative and some grants, some national grant funding that we've been able to garner because of our relationship with the Department of Education and the partnership. Partnership is a Mott-based after-school network. We're one of 50 across the country. Each state has a Mott network now. And Mott supports that work in out-of-school time through this initiative. We also help host an annual collaborative conference and summer summit. We've been doing that since 2004. And we bring together between 300 and 400 participants bi-annually or twice a year to, to come to this conference. And it's a full-day conference that works on program quality and professional development for the staff. We also have an advisory committee that's made up of a whole lot of partners here at the Department of Education. We have partners from other offices within the Department of Education that help to advise us on what are the best practices, what are standards, what are the things that we should be striving for in out-of-school time programs as well. And that includes the Office of Educational Innovation and Improvement, School Nutrition, School Health, Field Services, Childcare Office, and the Michigan Library has all been partnerships with us on the advisory committee. We've also partnered with external agencies like the Department of Health and Human Services and licensing. Even the DNR has partnered with us. We've had multiple stakeholder organizations at the table at our advisory committee meetings, and we hold those quarterly. We have MSU Extension at the, and their 4H program. We have the Michigan After School Association. We have the United Ways of Michigan. And we have diverse providers who come to the table as well. So those people that have received the grants come to the table to help advise us on best practices in the field and on how to really support them in the field. And we've had providers from all regions of the state, including urban and rural, northern Michigan, and southeast and southwest Michigan. We also have lots of cross-office initiatives going on. We, we try to get our fingers into everything and we try to make sure that our staff, there's a staff of five of us who participated on lots of the cross-office committee work. I mentioned the school age design of the QRIS. That has been a huge initiative that we've been working on over the last three years. We've also worked with the Office of Education Innovation Improvement on the EdTech Plan, on some of the ESSA teams, on dropout prevention conference annually. We've worked with the badges project with two different parts of the Department and Office of Educational Innovation and Improvement. And we've also been working with the data hubs through the TRIG project. And that has been initiated through a grant with the Michigan After School Partnership and the Mozilla Foundation. We are one of the states across the country that's leading this work in digital badges for competency-based education. We have been asked at the national level to present on how we are integrating what kids do in out-of-school time with the kinds of competencies we're expecting during the school day and how we can recognize what happens in out-of-school during the school day and through the school, their school records and school transcripts. We also partner with the School Nutrition Program. We've, we've helped to increase after-school suppers around the state. We've helped to increase the summer food program around the state by making sure that all of our 21st Century programs who are all eligible for these services for their students provide these things for their children. And trying to work with the Michigan After School Partnership as well to bring the stakeholders together to make it easier for programs to provide those meals for kids. We've done lots of interagency collaboration over the years. Remember, we started this in 2002, 2003 school year. And since then, we've had lots of changes happening in licensing and regulatory affairs. We've sat on committees over the years to make sure that the work that's being done in licensing reflects what needs to happen in school age programs and in programs for older youth and not just preschool and toddlers, although we think those are important too. We've also helped to, had licensing, work with us to expedite the licensing for those after-school programs so that they can receive services like the School Nutrition Program and the Child Development Lock Grant Money for childcare. We've worked with the Department of Health and Human Services over the years to offer and help to collaborate on some grants. Our most recent work with them that has really resulted in a huge benefit for the state was our Summer Enrichment Program, which we presented on previously to the board. But there's also a, a research brief about our findings with that. We, we were able to take a small amount of money that was only offered for a very short period of time and make some major differences in summer programming for, for kids, where there, the findings showed that we were actually moving the bar from summer learning loss to summer learning gain for the kids who, who participated in that program. And we've also worked with DNR and MDOT on some free programs and getting the word out about those programs to the schools in the state so that they can take advantage of those programs. They do curriculum and they have also done some internship programs for high school youth through the DNR, or MDOT, sorry. We have also partnered across the country and done some other really cool things with NASA. We have been part of a NASA project with 21st Century and the NASA Education Department to do STEM challenges. We're in our fourth year of being accepted as a state to provide NASA to our, NASA learning challenges to our kids. And we have 12 sites currently working on a NASA STEM challenge where they get an opportunity to actually work. to actually work with astronauts and engineers from NASA via virtual connectivity. And it's just the most exciting program. I just can't say enough. If anybody wants more information about that, I have a ton of stuff in my office about all the cool things that have happened. And we, and Michigan, and I have to say, I'm pretty proud of our kids, have always placed on the finalist list with the NASA over the last three years. So we're expecting that. We told them all this year that we expect them to get out there and do it again. We have also done, like I said, the Summer Expansion Project. That was a collaboration between Human Services Funding and us. And we were able to, like I said, expand that program. And if you want more information about that, there's the brief and then we can also talk more about that afterward. We have developed through our advisory committee, some advisory guides over the years and the advisory committee has initiated and led those guides by asking questions at those meetings. And we build that into a commitment to develop guides for other grantees. So we've built a project director's guide. We've built a financial best practices guide that helps them to understand how to spend the money appropriately. We did a family engagement guide and we also did a family engagement pilot project with middle school kids and their families. We brought families and middle school kids in together with a project that we devised with the Wykert Center to coach families on how to engage their middle school students in thinking about college and career. And we're building that into a virtual learning for professionals in the field as well to so that they can replicate that project. We have an advisory committee guide because each of our locals have to have advisory committees as well, so we help them to learn how to do that and how to best engage their advisory committees. We have a local evaluator guide and we built a school day collaboration guide where we worked with our partners to talk about how to best work with schools, especially for those community-based agencies that are coming in and working in a school or with students from a school, so that they can really connect what happens during the school day to after school. We also, I have copies of this for everybody, you can take them to lunch with you. They're pretty heavy to carry around, but I encourage you to take one home. There are four articles in this document. I didn't put it on this slide, but page 110, page 162, page 384, and page 421 are all articles that feature programs in Michigan in this national compendium that was created by the Mott Foundation and Collaborative Communications Group last year. This is full of research and best practices around what to use in out-of-school time programs. And there's lots and lots of guidance in here that we've been using over the last year. This is not my dog-eared version, I brought the nice one. But I use this a lot and if you're interested, it's also available online where you can do searches to look things up. We have been a national leader in professional development and evaluation as well. Like I said, our evaluation team gets asked a lot of questions nationally. We've been featured in lots of work with the U.S. Department of Education and 21st Century Community Learning Centers work groups and with the CCSSO when they developed a document for connecting 21st Century programs with preschool. We were the only state where preschool and 21st Century were actually housed in the same Just this past month, I was asked to be a feature speaker about our professional development program with a webinar that's going to go out to other states around what are some good practices around providing professional development for our programs and our staff. And I want to thank you guys because we wouldn't be able to do half of what we're doing if it hadn't been for the support of this Board of Education. And starting with the model standard, I have to say, the model standards, I consider one of the legacies of John Austin and Kathleen because they have been with us since we first brought them to the board in 2003. And then we were the very first state in the nation to adopt out-of-school time standards of quality for our programs by a state board of education. It's resulted in this little document, but this little document really kind of rules our world and is our way of really helping programs think about how to offer the best programming for kids. And I have to say, without those two people on our board, I don't think that we would have really moved things as far as we have in the state. John has been, participated with us on Mott Network meetings. He's gone to national meetings with us. Kathleen has been featured, she's also gone to network meetings with us. She has been featured at the National After School Challenge in 2011. She was honored there. And she was also honored in the state by our Michigan After School Partnership at a Legislative Breakfast a couple of years ago. And then I have to thank again Kathleen for her support through her work with the National School Boards Association or the National State Boards of Education, NASB. And she helped to author an article about out-of-school time programs and how important it is in the field. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for supporting out-of-school time and the work that you've been doing and supporting us in the work that we're doing with the programs in the state.
All right. Thank you very much. And I can say as a local superintendent, these programs make a difference for kids in terms of their student achievement. It's a great program. John, did you have something before we adjourn?
Yeah. This whole 21st Century School and Out-of School Time Learning Program and Movement is a fruit of Flint, Michigan, the Mott Foundation's creation of Community Education Movement, which made the community school the center of community life, which under the Clinton era became a national program that said, we want to help kids stay active but get educated around school time. And so it's really a creation of Michigan. And actually Peyton Manley was here, whose great-grandfather is Frank Manley, who would have been one of the instigators of this. I worked with Pat when I was in Flint, but I had a quick question. And so this is Michigan's creation and one of the things we should be proud of and we should be continuing to lead on. And thank you for your continued leadership in this work. Is this all federal money?
21st Century is all federal money right now.
Is it, what's the cycle of it?
Each program gets a grant for five years and it's federally funded through No Child, it was federally funded through No Child Left Behind and it's now in ESSA. So along with all the Title programming, it's Title IV Part B and it is a competitive grant. We have been losing money over the years, if you go back to that slide with the charts on it, because really, we started out gaining money each year because of moving it from a federal program to a state-based program. And then during the recession, we gained a lot of money because our families were affected and it's all based on a formula based on Title I. And we had more funding then. We have less funding now because our economy's actually getting a little bit better. And there has been no change at the federal level in the amount of funding for many years.
And I assume this because it was asked of me, is there any way to structure the program to leverage philanthropic dollars to expand the slots?
We would love to have that happen. And we do, in some communities, they've done that locally quite well. In the Newago County area, there is a foundation that has been working with the Michigan After School Partnership to look at how they're funding out-of-school time programming in that region and how to make sure that their programs are also following the model standards.
Last quick comment. When Bill White, head of the Mott Foundation, said to President Clinton, I'll give you $800 million if you'll match it and make this a national program, it was announced at a press conference, which is the one at which Bill Clinton wagged his finger and said, I did not have sexual intercourse with that woman. So right behind Clinton is giant Bill White with a bald head. So the announcement kind of got stepped on, but it was that catalyst to say, let's make this a national program with Michigan's leadership.
Okay. Kathleen Strauss, please, and Richard Zeil.
Think of that when you see that tape.
I want to thank you, the way you've actually implemented this so effectively. I started out wanting to have, quote, "full-day, full-service schools" because I thought the schools should be the hub of the community and all services could be provided through the schools, health, social services, et cetera. It hasn't happened, but the after-school, the before and after-school program has really come to fruition, not everywhere, but a lot of places. And then it's so good because so many parents both worked and children had nobody at home when they went home from school. And then they got into trouble. They were on the streets, whatever they did. So this is really valuable when you get what you're doing is valuable program. So I'm really glad to see it's developed and that you're doing such a great job. So thank you very much.
What's really, really exciting to me is that we moved from getting kids off the street to really supporting them in their academic achievement and in their career and college readiness. And that's even better than just getting them off the street. Getting them off the street was really important, but it's gone even farther than that.
It's a very good program, a positive.
Yes.
Dr. Ze, please.
Just a quick question to see if I've got my head wrapped around this. So you've got about 63 grantees that have 277 programs? Is that what I?
Fifty-three current grantees, 53 across districts, community-based organizations, and universities. And they run programming in 277 sites.
Okay. And the NASA partnerships, is that 12 of those?
12 of the 277 sites.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to see how those numbers fit together.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned till 1:30. Or should we say 1:15?